All right, it's 6:04. I'm gonna call finance committee to order. We're just gonna do meeting minutes first and then we'll jump right in. First meeting minutes is from last week, last week? Yeah, last week, March 5th, 2025. Can I get a motion on meeting minutes from March 5th?
Unless Karen has any corrections, I'll make a motion. Will you approve them as printed? I'll second.
Okay, second. I mean, now Karen, if Karen has correct, I don't know why you pointed you out directly, but any conversation, corrections, alterations on the meeting minutes for March 5th, 2025?
Yep.
Anything more?
Yes.
Okay. Shoot.
The departments were at the direction, they were advised to do level funded budgets, but we should put something in there that it's not all level funded. That might be more on March 6th. But there were additional people added, additional hours that are not level funded. You gotta get that out there.
And that was part of the discussion on the 5th or the 6th?
The 6th.
And really, I mean, to your point, it should be level funded plus contracted plus a couple of small things to your point.
Well, yeah, but it's, you know, they were directed to, but we need to say, but that's not what this is. We have to somehow put that in there.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we're not transparent.
That's fair. I don't disagree with that.
I'll correct my motion to that with that correction. And I'll second.
Okay. Oh, and any other discussion on March 5th? Okay. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes for March 5th, 2025?
Aye.
Aye. No one's online, okay, good. Any opposed? Okay. March 6th, 2025?
I make a motion, we approve the March 6th minutes as printed.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Same correction.
Same correction, yeah, okay. Understood. Alteration on the motion?
With the alteration, yep.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion, corrections? All those in favor of the meeting minutes with the correction as pointed out by Karen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Cool. Okay.
And as Leah and Tom are not here, it's 6:07, I'll call the select board meeting for March 13th, 2025 to order. Referee member board. Just the usual notes were being broadcast on Zoom and being recorded for future posting.
Swirl the money, go, by the way. Paper. Everything goes on. All right, so we're gonna start with BayPath as it's just usually shorter, so we can get that done and hopefully let them get out in some amount of time. You guys ready? Those ones are BayPath, I believe, right?
Yes.
These cookies, where are those? Are those homemade?
To be honest, Sherry Haber made the cookies.
I remember Sherry's cookies.
She said she was gotten.
I almost said that's the same dish that she brought last year. That answered your question. All right. BayPath, take it away.
So, good evening, I'm Kyle Brenner of the Pride Superintendent of BayPath Regional Location and Technical High School. I have our new business manager, Sidney Schofield, here tonight, and Emery Pintos, one of our school committee reps from Rutland is here as well, and Joe just texted me he won't be able to make it. So with that, thank you. This is our FY '26 proposed BayPath budget. Next slide. So you can see our funding sources here. Chapter 70 and chapter 71 estimates are based on the governor's budget submitted January 2025. Our estimated chapter 70 funding for FY 2026 is $14,565,806. Our estimated chapter 71 funding for FY '26 is $1,375,375. These are preliminary estimates, some change as the budget makes its way through the House and Senate. In the next slide, you can see the impact on BayPath. You see FY '26 over FY '25, our chapter 70 is increasing by $112,194. Our minimum contribution have gone up $388,016, and our required net school spending has gone up $500,210 over the previous year. The financial information, FY '26 total budget for assessment is $30,298,721. Our member town assessments are at the minimum. Our budget includes debt service assessment of $1,552,300, and our operational budget does not require municipal funds above the minimum contributions by our member communities. Our member assessment total is $13,665,798. Although the assessments are not at the minimum, it's important to note that the required minimum contributions that each town must contribute have gone up by $388,016. Our member town transportation assessment has increased by $345,176 due to a decrease in our regional transportation reimbursement funds. The district has allocated $260,531 of our E&amp;D funds to partially offset that higher increase this year. Our total chapter 70 revenue is $14,565,806. Our school choice assessment that we must pay out is $293,789, and our chapter 71 busing aid again is $1,375,375. And the use, we're gonna again use $75,000 from our E&amp;D fund to continue to fund down our OPEB liability. And in FY '24, the district missed its net school spending requirement by $60,595, so the FY '26 budget contains an appropriation of $500,000 from E&amp;D to reduce that shortfall. And the next slide shows the full statement of assessment for the proposed FY '26 budget. You can see our chapter 70 at $14,565,806. The reduction of $293,789 for our school choice assessment. The total assessment, minimum contribution assessment is $11,613,795. There's no assessment above the minimum. Our fiscal '26 interest earnings are $150,000. Our E&amp;D transferred to OPEB is $75,000. Our E&amp;D to close the net school spending gap from the previous year is $500,000. For total operating budget of $26,610, $26,610,812. And our transportation budget overall is $2,135,906. Our chapter 71 assessment is $1,375,375. Our E&amp;D reduction is $260,531. And, sorry, our assessment to the towns is $500,000 on that. You can see our debt service of $1,552,300 is made up by $845,000 in principal and $7,003 in interest. There's no buy-in assessment, no sewer assessment, and the FY 2026 budget for assessments is Add back in the school choice of $293,789, and that comes to $30,592,510. You wanna take over the budget, huh?
So some of the highlights that we're gonna talk about, we're adding a new diesel vocational program this year with two instructors. One of our instructors has started just recently, so that'll be happening next year, the whole diesel program starting up. We're also gonna be adding 10 part-time student summer positions. This is gonna be positions at minimum wage, and they're gonna be students from our different vocations, you know, building and property maintenance, carpentry, cabinet making, just to kind of work on the summer, helping the school get ready for beginning of school in September. A good opportunity for some students to work in their shop expertise and continue kind of over the summer. We're gonna be adding a vocational instructional coach. This current year, we added an academic coach, so we're gonna be doing the same thing for the vocational teachers, giving them an instructional coach. We're adding a health dental vocational aide, primarily gonna be in the dental, but definitely going to help the health program as well as needed. This budget also includes contractual wage increases for all employees. We have a health insurance 18% increase this year, which is a fairly large hit for everybody. In talking with other districts and colleagues, this is kind of the industry standard right now. We have talked with our health insurance group over the past six to 10 years. We've had a handful of years where there's been no increase, so we talked them, kind of pushback from all the providers was, let's do a minor increase every year, so we're not with a huge increase in one year. So that'll be over conversations happening over the next few years about the health insurance. We're gonna continue to use our SOA funds, provide significant professional development to all staff, especially programs focused on social emotional issues for students, and also use of our SOA funds provide programs and speakers to students to address issues such as bullying, bias, mental health, and more. Our supply and material accounts have been funded to account for continued inflation. And then some of our shop equipment, we're gonna have some bigger items. Our culinary arts program is gonna be getting a new steaming oven. Our building and property program is gonna be getting a new landscape utility vehicle. HVAC is gonna be getting updated student workstations. They're a little bit out of date right now, so that's in the works for next year. And automotive collision is getting a new frame machine. Freshman seat allocation. So this year, with the addition of the diesel program, we're gonna be increasing to 330 students for freshmen. This, of course, is based on the different towns and the student age kids in the town. So you can see for Rutland, this year you're gonna have 33 seats based on the student enrollment in the town. And then foundation enrollment is based on the current years and the town's enrollment. So again, for Rutland, you'll see that you're gonna be going up 12 seats this year, which is a 17% increase from this year, going up to 81 students next year. This is a collective group of all the towns for statement of assessments for everybody. Looking at Rutland, minimum contribution is gonna be $774,277. Foundation enrollment is 81. Transportation assessment is gonna be $32,767. Debt service is gonna be $156,384 for total assessment of $963,428 for Rutland. And the next slide just shows a comparison from FY '25 to FY '26, and you can see that minimum contribution is going up $147,814. Transportation is going up $24,173. Debt service is increasing by $806, and the overall increase from this budget to next budget is $172,793. And the next slide is just the grand totals of all of our community towns, showing the total assessment for all towns is $13,665,798 for assessment, an increase of $733,172 or 5.67% overall. Questions?
Yeah, I have one question, and I guess it's related to the comment we said that there was a miss. Was the miss in expenses or was it in revenue?
Excuse me?
Net school spending?
Yeah.
So we didn't, we were below our net school spending, so we used $500,000 to offset that in this budget this year.
Well, I understand what you're doing to recover for it. I'm just wondering why it happened? Was it the spending side of things or the?
So we didn't spend enough. We didn't spend enough.
All right. So you had more revenue than you had, okay. Got it, thank you.
So E&amp;D, our E&amp;D is capped at 5% of the total operating budget. So if we don't make net school spending, we can take some of that and put it into E&amp;D, but we were at our cap for E&amp;D on that. So we put that money forward to this year to help spend down.
Thank you.
I saw you put a bunch of money from E&amp;D into different places. How much is E&amp;D remaining?
Our remaining E&amp;D is about $770,000, so the E&amp;D expenses, $260,531 went into the offset the busing, $75 for our OPEB, which is standard that we're doing every year. We put $500,000 in the FY '26 budget, and FY '25, we also added $500,000 in there, which comes out to, that was $1,335,000 and some change. So remaining after these three, $260, $75,005, puts us at about $770, rough numbers in our E&amp;D currently. Did I get it right?
Yep, $754,597 will be left over in E&amp;D after FY '26 budget.
$754?
Yep.
Are you comfortable with that number?
Yeah, fairly comfortable with that number.
Good. Gotta ask.
I see here you added a new diesel vocational program with two instructors. I think that's new this year?
It'll be brand new next year. So we submitted and received a capital skills lab modernization grant, just over $700,000, and that'll enable us. This year, we combined two of our programs that were slightly under-enrolled to combine one robust program, that was our business technology program and our marketing program. We combined those two programs into one program called Business Entrepreneurship and Marketing, BEAM. That created a space that opened up for us. That space, it was a nice space, if not your typical shop like a construction type shop. Our ISSN students, IT students, were located in a former small engine repair shop, so we're gonna move them with that money, we're gonna reconstruct the old marketing shop into a state-of-the-art IT lab, and we're gonna move the students out of that more industrial type shop up there, the professional atmosphere. We hope to increase the enrollment with that program. And the diesel tech program will go into the small engine repair, which lends itself because it adds the exhaust and the drains and all of that. All the work is gonna be performed by our construction students, so we have a cost savings there. And we have enough money, we've teamed up, Y Diesel Technology, our market analysis for Mass Hire, the blueprint says diesel tech jobs are in high demand. We know that in working with our advisors, we know that from our auto tech students. We get a lot of calls for diesel students that can make the transition, but now we can have those students go right into the diesel with very little transition. It's over the road trucking diesel, someone like Advantage ATG, Advantage Truck Group. It's also electric power generation diesel. Every large building has a diesel motor that kicks in when the power goes out, and it's also heavy equipment diesel on that. So there's a huge demand for that. A top-rated diesel tech right now can make over six figures. I know a diesel tech parts manager who's making $75,000. And we have those various entities and industries on our advisory board. So they've coached us in what equipment we need, and we're buying that equipment now. We brought on mid-year in December, a certified diesel instructor, and that gentleman is purchasing all the equipment and laying out the shop with the grant money now. We will open for exploratory in August of next year, and we'll bring, we'll have a second diesel instructor on there, and we'll stop populating that program.
So have you estimated what the total cost of this is gonna be going into 2027? And has that figured into this year's budget?
Well, it's figured into the budget. We don't anticipate any costs above the 700, the grant money that we have, with the exception of the, you see, the two line items for diesel instructors, that will be in perpetuity, and then, you know, we'll fund that with the supplies and materials going forward. So we built in any, I would call it supplies and materials. The large equipment is gonna be purchased, and that'll be good for the life expectancy of at least five years, and then we'll continue to, you know, assess the needs on that.
Are you finding that hiring the diesel instructors is a little bit more than what your average teacher would be? Because it seems to be very selective out there who they are.
It's, most of our trades, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, plumbing trades, diesel tech, it's hard because of the demand. We've had HVAC instructor position open for a good part of this year on that, so it's hard to attract them when it's raining outside and there's a lot of money to be had. It's a testament to what our students can achieve if they gain these skills and licensure in these areas, they can go out and make living wages and, you know, contribute back to the community on those. We were able to secure a top-notch, we're very happy with the first instructor that we brought on board, and we're confident we'll be able to attract someone equally as qualified. But he's already fully certified and ready to step in, he has a history of building a program, so we're excited about that.
I see throughout that you do have a lot of instructional coaches, so why are we adding another one?
We have one. Yep, we have one instructional coach that we brought on, and that individual was the instructional coach for all our teachers. And the demand is there. The teachers are reaching out to have their classes assessed and see what they're doing well and, you know, how they can improve on that. So we looked at our budget, and it supports, and it's a different, slightly, they're all instructors, but a slightly different nuance for our vocational instructors. Many of our academic teachers are trained, they went to school to be educators, and we're selecting individuals, men and women who are in the trades, who've worked with their hands and worked in the trades directly, and don't have the, you know, understanding of pedagogy and classroom discipline and all of that. So this will really bolster the ability for those teachers to have engagement throughout the day with the students and the competencies that they're looking at, as well as differentiate the instruction for all levels of learners in the shops.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick question. The diesel program, new program, what is the incentive? Where does the incentive for that come from to initiate? Is that just from demand from students?
We continuously review every one of our programs for enrollment, for placement. Successful placement is a student graduating from that program has their certification, industry-recognized certification, so who's completing it and achieving that level of certification, as well as upon graduation, they tell us whether they're going on to higher education in the field, if they're going into the world to work in that field, and they're joining the military. So we measure that under chapter 74 regulations, but also under Perkins, you know, federal funding for that. We're mandated to track those. So we look at successful placements, we look at enrollment, we look at a whole lot of data on that, and we see what's working well and what's, you know, where's the demand on it. And that's part of our program advisories that come together twice a year to review the program. So each one of our 22, currently 23 next year, programs has advisory panels made up of business industry leaders, as well as parents, as well as higher education and labor unions, if they exist. They meet, they look at our framework, they look at the data that we have, and they say, you know, hey, this is viable, this is what you should do. So the demand is there. So twofold, we saw low enrollment in business and marketing. Both frameworks are closely aligned, so we could merge those. It's right in alignment with the state as well, who reviews all the 44 frameworks of approved vocational, that they're looking at, you know, kind of merging those two as well. So we're a little bit ahead of theirs. Merge those two, we were able to do it without any layoffs because we had a teacher who retired, so rather than backfill that, okay, let's move the teacher over, combine the two, and now two low-enrolled programs with two teachers each. We have one heavily enrolled with three teachers, and we're meeting the needs, and it's adequate there. We're always looking at, how can we expand? How can we build? And diesel was prime, we just didn't have a location. Now we have a location, and all the pieces fell into place on that, so we're really excited about it.
So from a hierarchical perspective, who's saying yes to the new program? Does it go into the school committee? Does it go into just to the superintendent? Or how does that get started?
It starts with an idea, and then we look at, how do we fund it? Where do we get this? So all the stars came into alignment. We knew that it was a high-demand area, we had no space. Our building is, for all intents and purposes, landlocked by our parking. We can't add a building, we can't, and going up is just cost prohibitive. We're on top of a hill, so any outbuildings, retaining walls and so forth are cost prohibitive right now. I'm sure you don't want us coming back asking for capital debt exclusion when we're paying off 1.5 million every year for the next 30-plus years.
Twenty more years.
Twenty-one, all right, twenty-one. So we look at, we look at the budget. Space opened up through this merger of the two programs. Then we said, how do we fund it? So the state invests heavily in expanding vocational access for students. We're in high demand, we have over 400 kids on a waitlist.
On a waitlist?
On a waitlist.
How many?
400. 400 kids statewide, there's anywhere, depending what numbers you look, 8,000 to 11,000 students on waitlist to get into a vocational program. So the state invests through the capital skills grants, as well as the capital skills lab modernization grants. Money for expansion, that money could be for small buildings, a pre-engineered building which doesn't fit for us because we don't have a nice level spot on that. So we looked at modernizing our labs and utilizing our students in-house, reduce construction costs for us, and helps our students gain valuable skills and contribute back to our school. So we went for that, and we secured, you know, we got pretty much everything we went for, but I'd say probably about 90%, not 100% that we looked for. They funded it, so we're gonna take that and hit the ground running.
So you're, the 400 in the waitlist, you get 330 in the school, so?
We had twice as many applications. We get probably, just over, this year we had 900 applications for 330 spots. It's a marginal increase of five, but we have to do it year over year because of, you know, we're gonna build the program, because it has to come in freshman, sophomore, and then the tier level.
Thank you.
How vocational schools, I'll say Massachusetts and then the US, where do you rank?
As BayPath has, I don't know where we rank in terms of the 60, I believe there's 68 regional vocational technical schools in Massachusetts. I will say, no disrespect to our colleagues.
You should be saying number one.
That's right. You sky mom, I guess we are number one.
I'm not gonna tell you how to do your job, Doc.
We are number one. We do an excellent job, that's why I start with, I'm proud superintendent of BayPath Regional Vocational. Our budget, you can see year over year that I've been here, we've stayed at minimum required local contribution. So we're fiscally responsible with, you know, what our towns charge us with. We have been lucky to add, you know, vocational academic coaching, and our money goes into supporting our teachers so that the students can get the best on that. We're cognitive of that. We go after any grants that we can go after, and we have robust advisors that help us identify those. So any type of equipment, we just got a unsolicited $155,000 donation to buy a state-of-the-art lift for our construction trades. It's a lift that allows them to access, you know, higher places without having to take the time to erect the scaffolding and do that. We monitored for the last two years, the state prohibited what they used to allow is school-aged students to operate manual lifts. There's a hoisting restriction that was put on. And MAVA, the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators, lobbied hard, of which we're part of, all the legislators to change that. Our students in advanced manufacturing, although under the age of 18, can operate CNC lathe and Bridgeport. lathes and Bridgeport lathes and grinders, and even when they go out into the world to work. They do it under the tutelage of our students in a controlled lab at our school, but that allows them, as a seventeen-year-old, to be picked up by a company like Kinifax and pay them twenty-plus dollars an hour to come in and work every other week on that. They restricted it for hoists, we lobbied, it just got passed this year. And again, you talk about stars in alignment, unsolicited, a gentleman came through and said, I want to give you a hundred and fifty thousand for a lift. So we'll get all our instructors trained as trainers and they can provide that training to our students and now our students can leave with a certification to operate a manual lift.
So is the, is the demand that you're seeing representative of other vocational schools in the state?
Almost a hundred percent across the state.
Really?
Eight to, eight to eleven thousand students are waiting to get into a career vocational technical education.
So theoretically, you could build another Bay Path.
If you want to give us some money, I would gladly build that. How it started.
So, because the question is, at this point, where do those kids that want to go here, where do they go?
So there's a lot of work at the state level. This year's budget includes seventy-five million earmarked to expand vocational training to students across the state.
Okay.
In both comprehensive schools, as well as vocational schools. So there's, and there's a lot of unique ways that's happening. A lot of our schools, one, when Bay Path renovated the school that we're currently paying off, MSBA didn't allow expansion to increase enrollment. Even they had a waitlist back then when they did that. They wouldn't allow it. They have since, again, through MAVA lobbying, have allowed expansion of enrollment, thus square footage in the schools to meet that demand to a certain level, if you can show a historic waitlist on that. So the legislation has changed on that and the funding has changed on a new build or renovation of the school. The capital skills gives us some money to, a lot of our colleagues have put in the pre-engineered buildings to gain fifteen or two thousand extra square footage where they can now put a whole new lab on that. So they're looking at that. A lot of our communities are adding Chapter 74 or Innovation Pathway Technical Training Programs to the schools. And Chapter 74 is a big lift, there's a lot of investment in that, approval by the state. A Innovative Pathway could be a career and technical ed program that qualifies for Perkins. That's two years consecutively of training. That could be an auto one and an auto two class. That could be a pre-engineering class or a project lead the way type of class, project-based hands-on learning. So the comprehensive schools are meeting the demands of the students for hands-on learning. There's a really unique aspect that Monty Tech and our colleagues out in Pittsburgh have done. They just recently used one of the lab monetization to purchase a former Wachusett Brewery warehouse and their construction students are renovating that into a construction lab where they can offer plumbing, carpentry, and electrical. When we increase enrollment, we take enrollment from our communities, we take them from Wachusett, we take them from Dudley Charlton, we take them from, you know, Spencer and so forth. This new project that they're working on is, they worked with three of their communities who committed to sending the students over every other week. So three of the community, eighteen communities that feed Monty Tech, will send a group, a cohort of students interested in the construction trades every other week, just to get the vocational training. And they get their academics back at their, their member community town. It's a win-win for both because the member towns keep the Chapter Seventy funding for the student for all academics and just the four-plus thousand dollars, Chapter Seventy Four money goes to Monty Tech for them to supply the teacher and the materials and the supplies on that. So we, we monitor that very closely and we're in very initial talks with an organization in Charlton that has some space that they would like to repurpose and we're looking at the viability of doing something like that, if our member towns are so interested and we can do it. So there's another way we can expand without major capital increase on our towns.
Well, so if you're looking for land, I think we might have some out here.
We have plenty of land, it's just that it's not really level for us right now, you know, so.
What kind of federal funds do you guys get, if any?
We get, we get our Title I, we get our IDA, we get our Perkins grant funding.
So with the turmoil that's going on now, is how is that going to affect what you do and what we may have to look at this budget in the foreseeable future?
I think, you know, we haven't sounded the alarms, we're comfortable that we're going to be okay with the funding. I don't think anybody in their right mind will touch funding for vocational education.
Well, let's hope not.
The, the demand, every article you pick up is, you know, you can't find trades, men and women, to build, to manufacture, to do this. So the Perkins funding will be fine. We'll, we'll look at the, the Title I and special education funding. It's, it's not as bad for us, it'll have an impact definitely, but we're, that total funding is two million.
Well, not, not according to Perkins, it's a little bit less than that.
Little bit less than that. It's not as bad as the City of Worcester, which relies on tens of millions of dollars of funding for that. We're monitoring it closely, but I don't think their alarm's going off right now.
Of your graduating class last year, do you offhand know the percentage of the kids that went to work directly into the field, college and into the industry?
I was just looking at it earlier today. We're, we're closer to a fifty-fifty. I think we're a little bit higher in, not by much, not by tens, but we're, we're close to fifty-fifty going on to higher education, as well as into the world of work. But I just want to caution, we have to check one box. There's a significant number of students who are going into higher education, but they are working in their fields and they will be graduating debt-free. That's important to note. I can, my nephew graduated from the advanced manufacturing, he got a full job offer from the company he was co-op-ing at, and he also got us a, a pretty sweet deal to go to WPI for mechanical engineering. That company retained him and he works there when he's not going to school. And he, he will graduate debt-free. So, and they're contributing to, you know, his education because they want to retain that person. That happens, that's a personal, you know, I know that, but that happens for a lot of our students, so.
Cool, the way it's supposed to be, yeah.
I say we give them the key, it's their choice. Some say we're not doing our job if they're not going into the world right away, but we're giving them three keys and they choose which key they want to use.
So, do you have any statistics that say that it turned out twenty plumbers? And of those twenty that went to the field, how many of them stayed in plumbing?
So we are, we monitor at time of graduation, they have to show us their acceptance to college, they have to give us a letterhead from the company they're going to work for and we know if they're going in the military on that. And then we monitor one year out. And if we don't, we have to, we have to get positive responses, over sixty-five percent that have responded to us and every year. I don't have the number of how many stay in the respective fields, but we, like I'm would, we've never had to do an improvement study. We're hitting our targets that we set every year with the state on that. So they are still employed, they're still working, or they're still going to school or they're still in the military.
So I'm a pipe for the HVAC and a lot of the other.
Do you know anybody who wants to be a teacher?
Thirty years ago maybe. The, we get a lot of good kids, we've got a couple of kids in our company from you guys now, we get a couple from Assabette. I think we're doing a good job training them and unfortunately, we need more of them.
Need a lot more to do.
And we're doing, you know, just keep, I, I don't care if they go off to college or, or they go right into the field, I think whatever they choose. And, and if a few of them want to go into the military, God bless them, good luck, you know, and hope it works out well. So, thank you, I'm good. How many, oh, one last question, how many vehicles do you guys have down there that you?
We have, well, we have, I mean, like buses and stuff?
No, 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 like, I see Bay Pa, I see you guys with.
Vans?
Yeah.
So there's five vans and those are used to bring the shops out to work sites. So we have a house project or if plumbing's going out or.
And you guys maintain them yourself, right?
We do.
Okay, that's, that's where I was going with that, perfect.
Can I ask how you save so much money in propane and electricity?
So we took, so we took an average over the past five years to see what we had expended.
Yep.
And we, we projected it that way. It could be a, who knows?
That's the reason why, I was like, whoa, wait a minute, that might be a mistake.
We just recently.
Recording in progress.
We recently went out to bid on our propane.
Recording stopped.
Okay.
So we see, we did realize the savings in that, so that just went out to bid.
And electricity, there's a huge savings, I'm like, that never happens, so I just figured I'd make sure that that wasn't a no.
That was, yep.
On the same, same tune there, on the other instructional material, you had two years, twenty-four and twenty-five, at least twenty-five. Uh, six. It's a four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar decrease in that line item from year over year, and then the prior year was also higher. I'm just trying to understand what that, what's driving that change?
The vocational instructional equipment?
Yeah.
So that was this year for net school spending, that was some of the money we took off of, we added to the FY twenty-five budget to increase that, so that, to make our net school spending.
That's a weird way to budget.
Okay. We sat here and we put money into Bay Path. You graduate and a lot, some of these kids go into making six-figure income and eventually some may start their own business, which is what we hope for in this country for that free enterprise. What is the school doing to help them understand the financial impact of them bringing in a hundred thousand a year or starting a business? What financial, in terms of understanding how to start a business, how to manage your money, so the first year, you know, it's, you're in trouble?
Not enough, we're not doing enough on that. Each one of our frameworks requires the students, one of the frameworks, there's six frameworks of every one of our programs, and one of them is business entrepreneurship, so they get a little bit of it there. But financial, finance classes, we don't have areas where the students can take electives on it because fifty percent of their time is in the shop and their academics are limited to the math, science, English. Every class they take is a graduation requirement. So we're currently doing a comprehensive review of our scheduling to see if there are blocks that we can free up. And if we do free up those, we'll have some financial literacy classes that we'll add in on that to give them more, so that they can understand that. We know we have to do a deeper dive on that, we, we see that from our students and their understanding of, you know, budgeting their finances and, and things like that. But they do get entrepreneurship, it's a framework in all forty of the approved Chapter Seventy-four programs. But the financial literacy is better, like balancing a budget, writing a check and, yeah, it's a, and thinking about the future in terms of not just the dollar amount or the hourly wage you're getting, but look at the benefits that you're getting, you know, and that healthcare, as well as, you know, reimbursements for higher education, which will increase your income over the, over the span of time. So we, we need to do more and we're looking at that.
Anybody else on the finance side, you got a question?
I have, I have worked very closely with John LaFlesch and Don Montville. And through them and Dave Martinson, we've accomplished a lot of work in this area relative to the cable situation. So I'm sure you're probably aware of some of it anyways. So, you know, I have nothing to say, but, you know, they, they know what they're doing, they came in here, it was all handled very professionally and done very well. And, you know, having been an instructor there for a period in time myself, I can say, you know, yes, I'm familiar with your operation and, you know, I'm going back to the days of George Fowler.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of going back.
The world was flat back then, yeah, right. So, you know.
Right, a memorial George Fowler athletic field.
Yes, yes, I've seen that, yeah. No, I've been up there to eat any odd number of times, so, you know, it's one of these things. But, you know, I congratulate you and your school and you've done wonderful things for me here in town, as well as, you know, the students that I graduated, some of them went into the computer area that I was instructor in, some of them went on to college. And today, I know, I'm, two of them still remain in constant contact with me, so, you know.
Excellent.
I know what they're doing and where they are and how they succeeded in doing what they have been doing, so.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I'm, but I used up the five minutes in my question. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to cook these back?
No. Spread those around.
That's a lot.
Sorry, Wachusett, all you guys.
I think you should pass those cookies around, Sherry had a real hard one of those cookies. And I'm telling you, they're well worth it.
She's, hers is good old. Those look pretty. Pretty good though.
That's something.
Pretty good.
Is anyone?
We have another carrot down there.
Well, I'm just going to go out.
That's what I did last year, careful, it slipped.
It is very good for that.
I did, it landed in Paul's lap.
Oh, thank you. It's not for me.
I'm going to take one home later, I'm going to take one for the road after.
Delicious, I mean.
Yeah, thank you.
Bring these down there too, please.
Get them down by those, over there, put them over there.
Everybody want a pretty cookie?
Jen's looking at them.
By the way, you did a good job.
Thanks.
Did they make those in their culinary art program?
I'm sure, I mean.
I think so.
No, the superintendent made them at lunchtime, of course they did in culinary arts.
Oh, no, they look nice.
You got to try one. Take one of those. You guys are having that. Sherry had a double shot.
Kind of cooked, oh, the last one.
Yeah, it looks like there's a molasses, a chocolate chip.
Leave them down there.
Leave them down there.
You leave them down there, oh, next to that bush.
Just leave them there, they'll go by the end of the.
Is this bad?
I think this is the right.
You're up the bat, big guy.
You okay?
Yep.
Are you happy to see us this year?
Jim Riley from Wachusett Regional School District, thank you for the opportunity for us to present to you tonight. I'm here with Michelle Grisay, who's our Business and Finance Director, Janet Brennan, who's our Chair of the Finance Subcommittee with us as well, and then Brett Beardmore, a member of our school committee as well, Rutland Representative. So we appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you about our budget. Certainly are going to be open to any questions that you have, however you want to proceed. If there are questions during the presentation, feel free to ask them, or if you want to wait until the end, we'll always do the best. And if we don't have the information, we're certainly willing to come back and send it to you, or whatever would be helpful. And so what we're hoping to talk to you about tonight is the progress we've made in the district over the last two and a half years, give you an update of where we are in FY twenty-five, talk about our budget development process this year, share our proposed budget with breakdowns by appropriations, share some of our. Uh, share some of our, uh, capital improvement and requests moving forward, and then also just discuss next steps with the budget. One thing I wanna share, and, um, one thing I'm, I'm honestly very proud of in the district is when I first came here, um, this is the third time I've been here, but the first time I came, uh, we really were in kind of financial ruin in the district. And was very behind in our reporting, um, end-of-year reports, audits, um, it really was a mess. And I've said this before, and I really do mean it, um, one of the best things that's happened to the district is us hiring Michelle Grisay. Uh, and she really has done an incredible job.
You had to clean up a mess.
She did, and, and it's pretty incredible, because right now, our accounting and financial reporting, it's completely up to date. And I say this and I mean it, I would put our, uh, financial records and then also, uh, any of our reports up against any district and honestly, any town. Uh, because it's that clean at this point. Um, but we've been doing other things as well, hopefully to set the course, uh, towards the future. We just finished a strategic plan last year, um, which gives us a, a vision over the next three to five years of improvements we can make in the district to become stronger. Uh, we have a town growth task force that is focusing on what are the population trends in all of our towns, Rutland, Holden, Sterling, Princeton, and Paxton. Uh, so we can be prepared if we start to have increases and, um, or decreases and are making the best use of the money that we're allocated. Um, we now make continual, uh, class size adjustments. I'm gonna share with you the staffing, uh, changes that have happened here in Rutland over the last couple of years. That was something that we weren't typically doing on a, on a daily basis. Um, we focused very hard on trying to improve our curriculum. Um, we're using now, really across the district, what they call HQIM, which are high-quality instructional materials. These are things that when you look at the research, they've been proven to work and get results from kids. And it was, uh, there was a need to replace some of the products that we were using in the district. And we've been able to do a lot of that with grant support. So, um, K to eight level, there's a brand-new, uh, ELA and math program that we put in over the last couple of years. Um, the ELA program, this is the first year that we've implemented, and was one of the things we talked about last year when we reviewed the budget. Uh, we have a new science program in, uh, grade six to eight. Uh, we're doing a program called Project Lead the Way, which is interactive science opportunities for kids. And that's gonna be really elementary school through the middle school. And we've read on our US history courses at the high school. Um, one of the things, and I, I mentioned it a little bit earlier, and I'll, I'll show you exactly how it's played out in, um, in Rutland. But we're very proud of the way we've been able to add staff in a budget-neutral way. And so, um, we've basically been able to look at levels or positions that aren't serving the purpose and no longer fill them or eliminate them, and then put the positions where they're most needed. And, uh, that's a practice that doesn't often happen in education, and it should. Um, we've negotiated new contracts with all seven bargaining units. Um, we'll be going into the third year of our contract with teachers. Um, I think we, we really negotiated very good COLAs with them. It was two percent, two-point-two-five percent. And then this next year, the final year of the contract, it will be two-point-seven-five percent. Um, but that actually came with an extra professional development day for teachers, and so that's actually a, a really good rate for all three of those. Um, the other thing we've been trying to do is look at our high school programming and, you know, and when I was listening to Bay Path, we're actually trying to do a lot of the things that Bay Path is doing. And so they mentioned pathways and some things that we're working on at the high school level now is trying to have opportunities for kids so they can apply their learning. There are a lot of good things about the vocational model. Because kids get to practice what they're learning in the classroom and they see the connection and why it's important. And you also learn a lot better when you not only see the value, but it almost makes sense in practical application. So we're trying to build that at the high school and have several new programs. You know, we have some in finance, health, health services, there's a criminal justice. Um, and, um, but they're continually expanding them, and they're expanding them through grants. And so we, we are able to fund those teachers as you get grants and start to grow those things. Because one of the things we've noticed as well is that students are changing. And there are some kids who are gonna be focused going on college, but there are some, some kids who are gonna be more interested in perhaps making a connection to, um, an area that they have interest in. So whether it be banking or whether it be, we have, we have the auto body, um, our auto shop. We're trying to make sure we have those things built in for all kids at the high school, because we, you know, we serve all of them. Uh, the other thing that's happening right now that's, it's newer at the high school is that we have a dual enrollment program and then also early college. Basically, both of those programs means that, uh, as a, as a student's taking a high school course, they can actually earn college credit. And that's good, two reasons, A, they can get the credit and, you know, transfer it if they're going to another school. The other thing that's happening, though, is you're able to get kids who maybe didn't think they could afford college or they were interested in college, and they can get that exposure. And some kids are deciding, hey, this is something I wanna do. Um, and it's more affordable because they get a connection to some of these, some of these other schools. And there's, um, more support in terms of them, uh, getting financial aid. So, um, those are, some of the things we're working on, we're also, uh, trying to work on some internships. Because one of the things we found is, uh, kinda like the pathways, the, if, if kids can start to experience in the workforce, um, either to find out, am I really interested in this? Or, um, you know, maybe build a connection with a future employer, those are, those are opportunities we wanna give them. And then the last thing I'll share is, and you'll see tonight, uh, when we present, we're really trying to be focused on data. And one of the shortcomings, I'd say, in, in the district when we got here, was we weren't as data-based as we should have been. Um, awful lot of educational research, um, and it's all based on data. And so if you're not making decisions based on data and have those systems in place, um, you're really just shooting in the breeze. And so, um, we really have tried to put systems in place where we can track student progress or interventions and know if they're really making a difference. Um, and I think that's, that's an important change that's been taking place in the district. And so where are we in FY twenty-five? Um, you know, really for the first time, you know, I, I said how embarrassing it was the first time we came and spoke to you. Um, wasn't too much better last year. We had made progress, but we weren't a hundred percent there. And one of the things we needed to do last year was clean up some of our appropriations. We were still off in our, uh, out of district special education tuitions. And we made that adjustment. And I think the good news this year is we, we really are, um, in a place where we have very high level of confidence in our, in our appropriations. Uh, we did, um, uh, make some transfers earlier this year, and we did that because we have had some unforeseen facility expenses um, that we had not anticipated. And I'll, I'll show some pictures of some of this a little bit later on today. But basically, we had an auto shop failure where the suspended concrete floor gave way. Um, and so between that, and then we also had a, a failure of our roof at the Early Childhood Center in the central office. And so, uh, we were able to handle, Michelle, um, can share a little bit later in terms of what we did. Um, we had, uh, transportation revolving where, uh, we still don't think we're gonna hopefully have to dip into E and D this year. Um, but that was about half a million dollars of an anticipated capital needs that we were faced with this year. Um, one really positive thing, and so another thing that we're proud of is last year we came and acknowledged that, you know, being in health harmless and, and getting so little in Chapter Seventy, that if the state gave us additional Chapter Seventy funds, we would advocate to school committee, uh, to please consider to give that money back to the towns and reduce assessments. And, uh, school committee did, they voted to approve that, and we were able to return about half a million dollars to the towns and reduced assessments. The other thing that we've accomplished this year is implementing a new, um, a new curriculum, uh, for, uh, English Language Arts at the elementary level. And so approximately three thousand students, so all your students in NaQuog, all your students in Glenwood have a new ELA program. And, uh, they've done a very nice job with it. We had a, um, uh, our support people come in and, and look at where they're at. And the, the feedback we got was they wanted to know if we were in year two or three, and we told them we were half-year, we were halfway through year one. So teachers, curriculum, department, principals, they're doing a really nice job, uh, supporting the curriculum. And then the last thing I share about, uh, the year from a district lens is that, uh, we had shared last year, we had some, uh, really critical capital needs at the high school. Uh, we had an intercom that wasn't working, and so that was an issue because clearly if you had an emergency, you need to be able to communicate with all the staff and students. Um, that has been replaced and fixed. We didn't have a functioning, uh, sound system in our auditorium. So our theater and, uh, music programs, we had to rent, um, a sound system, uh, during last year. And so we were able to place that this year. Um, and then we also got a generator at the ECC Central Office. And, uh, that was important because that was the only building that did not have a generator, and we're servicing three-to-five-year-olds, the youngest, most vulnerable learners in the district. And then we also have some of the technology for the district in the central office. And so, uh, if we lost power, uh, communications would have been, uh, disrupted, uh, in, in certain areas, uh, across the district. So it's, it's good that we've been able to put that in place. This is a nice part, just to share with you. These are things that, uh, we've done. I remember the first time we talked about, uh, wanting additional positions, the first thing I got told is when you come back to Rutland, um, we're gonna make sure you gave them to us. And so, uh, these are the positions, uh, that are different in Rutland over the last two years. Um, and the first thing is, uh, when, uh, just going back, not last year, or not this year, but the last year, because I don't think I did this my second year. Uh, we made a class size adjustment at NaQuog, added a second, uh, grade teacher. Um, we also added a special education teacher at Central Tree, a BCBA, which is a board-certified behavior analyst at NaQuog. Uh, a point-five, or which is a halftime BCBA Glenwood, and a point-five school adjustment counselor, guidance counselor at NaQuog. And I give credit to all the principals in Rutland, because they helped make some of those changes happen. Those weren't all positions that were in the budget and added. We actually had only added six positions, I think, across the entire, entire district in year one. But those are the results of looking at positions and saying, look, this is not a position that's serving kids as much as another one would. And that's how some of those, those positions came into fruition. This year, um, we added a district-wide special education teacher at NaQuog. We added an additional grade-three teacher at Glenwood. We added an additional grade-four teacher at Glenwood. Um, and then we added a point-five school adjustment counselor at Glenwood. The adjustments, uh, you know, in terms of the mental health support to both Glenwood and NaQuog, it's because the district didn't have full-time, uh, guidance folks at either one of those schools. And so we were able to accomplish that finally this year. And it's just, it's, it's something that's truly needed. Um, and then the class size adjustments that you see at Glenwood this year and NaQuog the previous year, it's because the classes are out of size or out of compliance with the school committee policies. And so a lot of these classes, if we didn't make that adjustment, you'd be looking at class sizes at twenty-five or twenty-six, which is just too big at the elementary level. Especially the way that we're, we're currently, uh, currently situated. And so we just wanna share, and really this is just a thanks, um, you know, uh, the first year I was here, um, we were able to put the, with, in some improvements at all the three schools. We've spent, at this point, I think it's probably closer to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but a hundred and thirty-two is what I had down the last time. And so I just wanted to make sure I was being accurate, but, uh, we've used our food service, um, revolving account to put improvements back into all three buildings. And they've had kitchen improvements, and most of them have, uh, new ovens. Uh, um, at NaQuog, they had some asbestos remediation in a storage area that was put in. Um, you know, and so they've really, they've done a nice job with food services, trying to, to bring all of those kitchens to a place where they can expand their offerings for food for the kids. And then really, this is just a thank you to the town in that, um, we had made capital requests in terms of security systems. And we now have new security systems at NaQuog, Glenwood, and Central Tree Middle School, and that's the result of the, the town of Rutland. So we just wanna say thank you very much, and that's, uh, that was wonderful, that, that was approved last year. And, 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 um, I know they, they certainly make, um, the schools, I think, parents and families, and then also, uh, teachers breathe a little bit easier. And so they're at the final process where they're getting their, their FOBs. But, um, you know, they, those projects, I would say, at this point, are ninety percent done. Um, and then the other thing, and I'd asked a check with Austin, but I know he, he, he moved on this as well, is, um, we have a floor, uh, for our district-wide program at, um, Glenwood. It's a second, uh, second-story playground, and, uh, the kids weren't able to use it at times because it was so uneven. It was a tripping hazard for them. Uh, and so there was money allocated to, to redo that, which is wonderful. And so really just a, a thank you. And so I, I wanna talk about, and I, I got this advice, um, from Sherry, uh, because Sherry had watched a couple of previous, uh, budget meetings. And not only did Sherry make the cookies, but I'm afraid of Sherry, so I do whatever she tells me to do. But she suggested, you know, talk to you first about, um, what we're hoping to get out of this budget cycle and why. And, um, you know, the first thing I'd share with you is I think we've done a lot of work in the last two and a half years to make the school system better. Um, but we're still not doing great. And the district, and this is true for the state, but it's certainly true for the district, has not recovered, uh, since the pandemic. And so our achievement scores still aren't what they were before the pandemic. And I'd argue what our achievement scores are, and you, you see this for, uh, between grades three and eight. And elementary at this point is my, my primary concern in the district, um, in terms of, of how we're doing and how I think we can improve things. Um, right now, uh, between three and eight, forty-nine of our, percent of our students are either meeting or exceeding expectations on the MCAS. And another way to look at that is fifty-one percent are either partially meeting or not meeting at all. And it gets even worse when you look at our high-need students. High-need students are students who are on IEPs or receive special education services, um, are English learners, or are, are from, uh, financially, um, struggling families, low socioeconomic families. And so, um, in, in that group, when you look at that group, only twenty-seven percent are, are meeting or exceeding. And seventy-three percent, um, are either partially or, or not meeting expectations. And it's similar for math, it's a little bit better. And we have been doing things to address this, that's why we put in new curriculums. That's why we're using data now. Um, but we've really gotten to a point where I feel like we have to have some interventions to help these kids. And I look at it particularly at the elementary level, because that is the time that, um, I think school districts haven't traditionally, or it depends, I, you know, I think a lot of times, and we'll talk about fund, funding in a minute. If there, there are positions that help support struggling learners at elementary in a lot of districts, but they're primarily supported by Title One or federal funds. Or they're positions that are brought in through the district. The reason why that's so important, um, is that what the research shows is how a child's, their ability to read, interact, their literacy skills by grade three, it predicts how they're actually even gonna do in high school, or how many supports they're gonna need to get through high school. And so it's a really critical time in their learning to get them to the point that they can interact with content um, and, and read well, and be able to express themselves through writing and, and have these skills. Because if they don't have it by third grade, what happens after third grade is you start to learn content, you start to specialize. And so if you're struggling to access that content, you're gonna be even further behind. And so we've looked at this, and this is actually part of our strategic plan. Um, and what we're gonna, what we're proposing, and I wanna be clear, and I'll get to this, that these aren't, much like I showed you a bunch of positions that weren't through the additional, uh, money in the budget, the majority of these aren't through additional money in the budget. But what we're looking at is, um, advocating for interventionists to support students in grade one and two. Um, these would, these positions, uh, would, would affect NaQuog. NaQuog would get one of these positions. To look at STEAM positions for grades K to five, and that would impact students at both NaQuog and Glenwood. Um, and then also address inequities, uh, and clearing you to the district. One of the issues in the district, and you saw how we added counseling positions at both Glenwood and, uh, NaQuog. Well, they were probably five out of thirteen schools that didn't have the same number of guidance counselors as other schools, and that's not right. All right? And so there are still some of those situations that exist across the district, and we're trying to, to, to finally fix a lot of those. And so, um, we're advocating for another special education teacher at Central Tree Middle School. Uh, we're advocating for team chairs, and team chairs are, are really special education, um, experts who run the meetings with parents. And, um, the way we do it now in district, it depends on what school you go to. In some schools, it's done by an assistant principal. Uh, in some schools, we have team chairs. The issue with it being done by assistant principals is a lot of times they haven't had the training to run those meetings. And it means that they're not actually assistant principals. They're, they're fulfilling a role in special education. And so not only when you get a team chair, you're getting somebody who's versed and experienced and a professional in terms of special education, you're also allowing your assistant principal to be an assistant principal and support kids and support families and support teachers. Um, and then the last thing I share that impacts Rutland is we're looking, uh, we think we're gonna need another kindergarten at, at NaQuog this year. And so that's one of the class size adjustments that, uh, we would advocate for.
Next acquisition.
Sure.
You'd like. Um, with regards to the, the MCAS scores, it, uh, do you have any data for if you took the high-need students out, where our percentages would be of meeting expectations?
I don't, um, I can, I can see if we can add to.
I, I would just be curious, because I, I have two kids on IEPs, and it's frustrating for me as a parent that they're taking the same MCAS tests, and I can guarantee you, they're gonna bomb it. And I can guarantee you, they're going to bomb it because of where they're at, because of their particular needs. They are nowhere near the level they're supposed to be at. No fault through the school, we're just, you know, doing what we need to to get up there. But it's at the state level, how are they accounting for those kids that do have the extra needs? And saying, there's a difference here. They shouldn't be lumped in with all the other students as far as, yes, we want them to be at the same level. That's why we have all these programs to help close gaps. But still, trying to account for it, it's almost like it skews the numbers a little bit for the district as far as where we're at, because you know these kids need the extra help. So I was just curious if there was any.
Yeah, I'm not aware if there's a metric that takes those kids out. I think I primarily worry about the frustration for kids. I may feel bad if kids are taking it and it's causing them frustration. Although hopefully there are some accommodations that help with that, whether it's untimed or other things. The other thing I think is important for us when we share our data is it's a similar practice in all the districts across the state. And so a lot of times, you know, I didn't call it out when we looked at the slide, but we are doing better than the state. I would just say that I think we should aspire to do a lot better than the state. And I know we'll talk about what we call our dark peers, which is the districts that the state says, hey, your achievement data is similar to these districts. You should be looking to achieve growth similar to them. And one of the things I'm trying for us to focus on, is that growth data? You know, because then you're not just looking about, you definitely always want to move it forward and get closer to that ultimate finish line. But really, the important thing is I think that every year, you're growing and getting better and recognizing that. And so we've been pretty good with that. What I would say is I think we want to do better. And it troubles me that we still aren't at pre-pandemic levels. And I worry about that. And I'm going to do a little bit of description of what the interventionist positions are. But I really think that is because of both our approach, right? Not being as focused on data as we should, not having systems as well developed as we need to to support struggling learners. And then the last piece is a little bit of resources, you know? And so we're trying to put those things together and hopefully, you know, come up with something that's going to help all kids, you know? And that's the one thing I will say about these positions, and I'm glad you brought up. These are positions that would service all students, whether they're on IEPs or not, you know? So we're doing it because of best practices research. It's in support of our strategic plan, which was made with stakeholders, parents, families, teachers, community members, and staff. And then lastly, I honestly am of the belief that this is ultimately going to result in cost savings. And so one of the things that's so backwards about education in my mind, regardless of the district, is education's approach has always been, you know, for whatever reason, and I'm not saying high school isn't important, it is very important. But it's always the flagship for districts. And I think it has always gotten the bulk of attention at the disadvantage of your elementary schools. And the issue there is kids are sponges when they're young. And if you can intervene and support kids at the lower grade levels, it's going to make a difference throughout their entire educational experience. And a lot of the services that get required because kids didn't get that intervention early on, they'll become unnecessary. And, you know, and so there's a cost savings. And then ultimately, the biggest benefit is kids don't, they don't have to feel like they can't be included in things. Kids actually have an experience where they are engaging and don't have to have somebody work with them on site or leave for another class or any of those opportunities. They are fully engaged, fully part of the school. And so that's really the reasons why we're trying to look at some of these attempts to impact education at earlier grade levels. People ask us, you know, what are interventionists? And so just a little bit, those are licensed, highly qualified educators who specialize in identifying and supporting struggling learners. And so these are folks who, they have a teaching license. But ideally, you're hiring people who are experts at, you know, there are teachers who always excel about trying to adapt or meet a kid at their level. And like, what does this kid need to get this, right? And really, that's the type of teacher you try to hire when you hire interventionists. And the goal would be that we would have interventionists in our schools where they would meet with the first and second grades. And so one of those classrooms for four times a week for 45 minutes. And the reason why we're focusing on grade one and two is because of, kindergarten usually has help with a paraprofessional in those classrooms. And one and two is usually a big jump up in the standards. And then also, you lose that support. And so by having another educational professional who's available to help support the kids for 45 minutes out of four days, you're able to get small groups of students who might be struggling and have another educational professional work with them directly. The other things about these positions is, like I said, they're experts in knowing how to scaffold or adjust instructions so kids can get it. The other thing they're really good at is data. And so knowing like, okay, they get it now, and here's why I know, how I know why. And then also, hey, they're not getting it. What's the intervention I can use in this curriculum that's going to help them? The reason why that's valuable is because, as I shared earlier, it's not a strength right now in the district. And so if you can get people who are going to be modeling that for other staff and helping them build their own craft, it's going to have a benefit even beyond their own interventions. And then the last thing I'd share is that we're trying to continue to get better about engaging with parents and families. And, you know, one thing we were able to do this year is we had universal conferences. So we had conferences in grades three to eight, which we had not been doing before. And there's still work to do in terms of the conferences having value. But I think that that's a step we've been taking to try to make sure if parents have questions about how their child is doing, or if they have questions about, hey, is there anything I can do at home? These are positions, I think, that would help with that as well. Where somebody could say, hey, I've been working with your child, and this is what's going well. And this is what I'm working on, and have some of those conversations if families are interested. Or ask questions and let them know, yeah, this is what we're working on. And, you know, if you read a story at night, this is what might be helpful to them. Or if you go to the grocery store, have them count out cans, you know? And those types of things that are, can be helpful for kids. The STEAM positions, one of the things I shared when we changed our curriculum, one of the things that was happening across the district that shouldn't have been happening but was, was we weren't aligned. And so we had some classrooms that would be spending 45 minutes on ELA at elementary, and we had some that were spending 120, all right? And like, think about that difference. You know, if you went to some schools or in some classrooms, you're getting three times almost the amount of English learning. And so what, one of the things we did was we said, all right, that's done, right? We got a new curriculum. The curriculum recommends that it's two hours, and we're going to be spending two hours, regardless of the school, regardless of the town. That's what the research says, it makes this an effective program, and that's what we're going to commit to, and we have. Similarly, we did that with math, and that's 90 minutes. And so every day in elementary now, there's two hours in ELA and 90 minutes on math. But with that, with that extended time, you lose out on some things that are good, right? And one of the things you lose out at the elementary level is we weren't able to spend as much time on science and social studies. And so the thing about science and social studies, and especially science, is kids really like it. It's like the stuff you do in school that they get messy with a little bit, put their hands on, kind of figure out the world around them, and, you know, it's a great way for them to learn, all right? It's hands-on learning, a lot of times they get critical thinking skills, it's project-based. And then they also, it's one of those things where they can start to make connections from math, or even sometimes what they're learning in English and say, oh, all right, I kind of get how that works. And so, and I think I said a little bit earlier, they really love it. And so one of the things we're trying to do is try to put in STEAM positions. What that would mean is, right now, kids go to art, music, and phys ed, right? Traditionally, there are more than just those three things. A long time ago in the district, you used to have media specialists and you used to have librarians. You don't have them anymore, they were eliminated, I maybe think, seven years ago or something like that. And so now for the kids, if you're not going to one of those specials, what they're doing isn't necessarily the best time on learning, you know? Not necessarily something where they're getting distinct instruction. I mean, I think, you know, at times, this is Media Center, they maybe read the story and been able to do other things. But our view is, is that we would like these kids to be able to get some more of an educational experience that right now they're not getting. And I think we feel like they'd love it, to be honest with you. And we have links to some of these curriculums, and you can actually watch some YouTube videos. And I think you'd see kind of what would, how would it engage a lot of our kids and also meet some state standards that right now, we're not meeting. And so that's why we have that approach. I always share this, and, you know, I'm happy I answer questions if people have it. Right now, in some of our schools, our elementary teachers don't have a daily prep, all right? And so we had a contract, this current contract that we're in has a requirement that by the third year of the contract, we ensure that every elementary teacher has a daily prep. And so elementary teachers, I said it before, like, they're teaching everything, you know? They're not specializing in a specific content, they teach everything. And they're with the kids all day. And to go from one subject to another subject and then, you know, move around, they really need a distinct time so they can do the work that we're asking them to do. So they can look at data or plan thoughtfully about how they can adjust lessons for kids. And so it's honestly, it wasn't a great thing that the district didn't have a daily prep for them built in. And they, and so I was, I understood why the teachers wanted to make sure that that was something that could be guaranteed for them. Because what's happened at high school, it was happening at middle school. It just wasn't always happening at elementary. And this will help us meet that contractual obligation. But I would say the primary reason why we're requesting the STEAM is because of the other things around that.
How long is daily prep?
Right, so it would be a typical period. So it will be a minimum of 45 minutes. Right now, though, for some of them, the way the contract works is, if you don't get a daily prep, then if you get enough minutes over a 10-day period, you know, so they would make it up another way, like, hey, I can get you another 30 minutes on this day. And if it met, but the problem with that is there are certain days where they don't get anything. And we're really trying to get it to the point where we up our professional standards. And with that, part of what you got to do is to be able to give people the time to do the work and the resources to do the work. How we looking to support this? Well, it's kind of, I think, one of the better stories in the districts, to be honest with you, in the district over the last couple of years. A lot of this, we will continue to look within. You know, we have 10 retirements this year. And I can guarantee you, we will look at every single retirement and ask the question, do we need to replace this position? If we do need to replace the position, you typically have a cost savings of between $40,000 and $50,000 just because of you're having a teacher who's retiring is at the very top of the wage scale. And then we typically try to cap it at what they call a master's three. And so there's a significant savings there, even if you do replace the position. But as we've done in years past, if we don't need the position, we're not going to replace it. We're going to use that money to put into another level in one of these positions. We'll continue to make ongoing class size adjustments. I shared how we have added some teachers at NAQAG and Glenwood primarily over the last couple of years. You know, similarly, if we have a level where we have six teachers, but we only need five, we have five. You know, we do reduce teachers that way. And typically, you might have a teacher then who teaches a different grade level because there's a need at another grade level. But we are constantly doing that work, and we will continue to do that work as we should. We're going to continue to use grants. One of the things about the STEAM positions, I didn't touch upon it, but they use a curriculum called Project Lead the Way. That's grant funded, we didn't pay a cent for it, and we already have it. And so there's not going to be a cost associated with that. One of the things we're going to advocate for moving forward is you'll see us make a recommendation to school committee to consider school choice. School choice is an opportunity for the district to take in students from other districts. It can be a revenue source that helps reduce the cost of the budget. Or certainly gives us a revenue source we could support other positions.
But in past years, when we did it, we lost our shirts.
You know, we've done some analysis and.
Let me put it this way, we were told we lost our shirts, is how I should say it.
Yeah, and we made this recommendation last year, and it wasn't voted through. I think the way we look at it is, you get to look at it two ways, right? If you're using school choice, and Bill Biendo, who's a Rutland guy, was telling me this the other day. Bill made analogy like planes, right? If you use school choice to add another flight, it would make no sense. But if you use school choice to fill the remaining seats on a plane that's already going somewhere, it's worth it. That's our viewpoint. You know, we don't know, and ultimately, it's a school committee decision. But I'm just sharing, we're going to, you know, advocate for it again because I think it is something that we should seriously consider. And it is a.
I just remember how much we were told that.
It's a polarizing issue, it's a polarizing issue.
We would never be trying to add another flight. We can't, we can't do that.
Sure.
And we are financially, we have the financial responsibility of the kids who leave the district and go to school choice. We pay for that. And so their seats are basically sitting there available. And so, you know, and you pick what grades have availability to open school choice seats. It's not like you just say, okay, school choice, what do you want? It's, we have this many seats available at this school, this many seats at this grade level, and you can do it by school. So it's not ever a case where we should lose. And should a special ed student come in, there's a special ed increment. You know, you're not, you're just getting some of the money back that you're paying out.
So do you know how many seats on the plane are available?
We haven't really, have you done that detail?
We have not. Yeah, so we, I think we'll have it when we present it to the school committee or some areas where we feel, and we try to do it. And we had done the work last year where, you know, we'd meet with the building principal and say, what do you think? We wouldn't open them up until we were sure that there weren't going to be class size issues around it. You know, if, you know, say we're looking to keep class sizes at 22, and they're at 21, we're probably not going to recommend a school choice student there because you could have a move in, and then all of a sudden, you're at 23. It'd be more looking at classrooms that are at 18. And, you know, hey, we could probably move in a couple of kids here. And I think the opportunity for us to really do it would be at the high school level as well. Where, you know, right now, we have room. And it's, you know, especially when we're going through the process where we're considering if we need certain teaching positions or other things, it's good to understand that, okay, we may be getting, you know, another 20 kids in this grade or whatever it is. And it'll help inform those decisions because I think what we're trying to build is some stability and understanding about where we are in terms of our population. And maximize the use of the resources, right? Just like, you know, we don't want to have classrooms that have 25, 26 in them. We also don't want to have classes of 15, you know? And not that we have a lot of classes of 15, we don't. And that, those are the classrooms when we look at and say, okay, we don't need this many teachers. But, you know, school choice is a way to kind of mitigate some of that, some of that risk.
So now you're going to a different town, not in the district, and offering to people in that town or students in that town, education from what you're, it's going to be costly to get those students from their town to what you're.
It's the parents' responsibility. And so we don't pay anything for transportation from another town. Parents sign an agreement that it's their responsibility to get the child to school on time. And it's one of the good things about school choice, I would say, is if parents are making the commitment to drive their child every day or get them to school, they get a little flesh in the game, a little skin in the game, so. But I have a feeling that will be must-watch TV in a couple of weeks when we're here with the school committee. And, you know, it is something that needs to be taken seriously. And I think, you know, I'm not saying it's a, it's, I understand both sides of the equation. But I think we're at the point where we feel like it's something we should, we should consider. And then the last thing I'd share is, there is, and Michelle will share this. I don't know what the increase in our salary line is, I think it's 4.5, something like that.
Yeah, 4.5, a little under 5%.
And so part of what's in there is a couple of positions that we feel like we couldn't find in efficiencies. But all of the positions that I shared with you, those are not all added in the salary lines. And these are the reasons why. Because we just wanted to be clear about that.
One more question about the school choice. Is I understand that we're, the hold harmless situation that we're in right now is because we have kids leaving the district from reduced numbers. If we were to do school choice, would that help bring us back up, or it's not applicable?
They don't count because, just like Austin Wachy said, so if we have a child who's school choice into another district, we get their chapter seven.
They count.
Yeah, they count for. Yeah, they count for us.
Responsible for them.
But then, five thousand of that goes to the town where they're attending.
Unless if there's any sped increment. You'll see, when I do that, I'll point out where we're paying for it.
Okay.
It's a, it's a good question.
Thank you.
You know, if you, um, and I appreciate sharing the advice and I wanted to share with you the good, the good things we're trying to accomplish. But really, the most important part of this presentation, I would tell you, is right now. Because what we're desperately trying to do is raise the awareness of what's happening in the state right now and how schools are funded. And there are great inequities in terms of how different school districts are supported and how different towns are treated. And, you know, um, right now, what they're using for chapter seventy in school finance, it is harming Wachusett. It is harming all five of our towns. It's based on a model that they built in nineteen ninety-two, all right? And hopefully, most of the things we do in the world right now aren't the same as they were in nineteen ninety-two. And I think it definitely, and I'm gonna show you a couple of examples, it doesn't fairly support or capture what the needs of our students are and how much it costs to educate them. And it disproportionately puts that burden back on the towns, all right? Because the state's not acknowledging how much it takes to educate kids, it's falling back on the towns. Right now, the system, and I'd say this, if Bay Path was here still right now, it works fantastic if you're a vocational school or if you're an urban school. It works great. What happened with Bay Path, I mean, they told you, they got so much funding, they couldn't spend six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of it. Right? And that was only the state funding. And, you know, when you look at urbans, if you look at the most of the federal dollars, that's where they're going. Your Title I, um, you know, predominantly is gonna go to those kids, because there's a low income component of that. You know, we have some Title I, but not, not to the level. Like I said, we have maybe a tutor at some of our schools. And my wife teaches in Lemonster and they have three Title I teachers there, okay? And, but I wanna be clear, I'm not bad-mouthing the vocational schools. I think they have wonderful programs and I'm, I'm jealous of them, all right? In terms of what they get for funding. And then same, same thing with the urban schools. I, I worked twelve years in, in Lemonster, really root for the families and the kids there. And so, uh, not criticizing what they get for funding, but when you see our funding, I think there's a clear case that there's a real inequity here. And so, first thing I'm gonna show you is this is our per pupil foundation budget. And this has nothing to do with the town, okay? This is what the state says it takes to educate a student in a particular school district. And so for us, they say, in Wachusett, it takes thirteen thousand dollars, okay? But if you go to Bay Path, they say it's twenty thousand dollars. What that effectively means is, every student at Bay Path, the state's saying it, it takes eight thousand dollars more. They get eight thousand dollars more.
Per student.
Per student, okay? Michelle did some quick math the other day. Our budget would be a hundred and sixty-one million dollars if our number was the same as Bay Path. And we wouldn't be asking a dime over, 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 over what we got from the state.
We don't need it.
Yeah.
Either.
And we would be fine.
We would be happy if they gave us what it really costs.
Yeah, and then that's the thing, is we're not advocating for these numbers at all. And even when we ask for operating funds from the towns, we're not approaching these numbers, we're not. But you can see, how can you have a system where you, you know, a different school district? And in this case, like a Bay Path or a Monty Tech, they're our same towns. And the model though somehow calls for eight thousand or seven thousand more per student. And it happens in the urbans too. You know, Worcester is twenty thousand dollars and Lemonster is eighteen thousand dollars. And again, I'm not criticizing or claiming that this isn't appropriate. What I would say is inappropriate right now in the state is saying that it only takes thirteen thousand dollars to educate a, a student in Wachusett.
This has been an ongoing conversation for a long time.
Yeah, this is a little bit different. So I, I'd say to you.
Well, other than the fact that you, you know, you're saying it's broken. And I think everybody agrees with that. Question is, who's doing what?
I'm gonna share some of the work.
How about this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. And the way, the reason why I say it's a little bit different is I think a lot of times, um, when the district came and, and shared data like this, it was what they call.
Per pupil expenditure.
Per pupil expenditure. And the thing about that, and, and I don't know what the argument they were making, is in some ways that like infers like, oh, the towns aren't giving us enough support. The truth is the towns are giving us quite a bit of support, right? It's just, it doesn't show in that figure, because we're starting at such a low level. And so when the, when the state sets it at thirteen, even when you're getting a lot of support from the towns, your per pupil is still gonna be artificially low. And so that's what's different about this. This has nothing to do with our five towns. This is purely what the state is saying, yeah, we think it, it costs eight thousand dollars less in Wachusett than it does in other districts. And it just doesn't make sense. And it has an impact on the funding too, right? And so this next, this next slide you see is this is about chapter seventy-eight. And, and again, you know, what we're getting for state aid is five thousand five hundred in Wachusett. And you look at the other districts and it's close to twelve thousand in Lemonster. It's fifteen in Worcester and hovering around twelve-five at Monty Tech and eleven-seven or eleven-eight at Bay Path. And so again, that has a direct impact on town share and what the towns have to pay. Because the chapter seventy-eight is the primary, um, source of income that the states are providing to the district. And so if they're giving us five thousand, that means the rest of it, if we're trying to get to an acceptable level, what it takes to educate the child, it's falling back on the towns.
So the, the difference between what you see here, that state aid, the difference to get to that foundation budget that was calculated, the towns are paying. That's your minimal local contributions.
So, okay.
So in Worcester, for example, their per pupil was what, eighteen thousand? So the town, Worcester pays like three thousand as their minimum local.
It was twenty, it was twenty in Worcester.
It was twenty, okay.
Lemonster was eighteen.
Okay, so Lemonster was eighteen. So you can see proportionally even, the, the minimum local contribution proportionally, you're paying more towards. But if our foundation budget was greater and we got more aid, that would go to the towns, so.
So, I mean, from the perspective of budgets and spending and tax dollars, a lot of us here on these, on both the select board and the maintenance committee, we're pretty supportive of what the school needs are. But there's a balance theory that says that the town has needs also. So we're playing one against the other. And somehow, that needs to be able to be rectified. And I'm, I'm just not sure where that's happening.
Yeah, I'm gonna share some of the advocacy and, and I, I would agree with you. And, and I would agree with you that we're showing this information a slightly different way than before, but this has been around for a long time.
Yeah.
You know, and I think we're probably talking about it more now, even though we, we should have been making a bigger case about this, even us in our previous presentation, so people were aware, because we are in held harmless. And so that hits the, the, it just, it makes everything worse in terms of the chapter seventy-eight. And I, I'll, I'll tell you right now, I think that's the other big piece of this, right? You look at, and I'm gonna get the numbers wrong, but, uh, last year, right, sixty-six?
Sixty-one.
Told you. We were down, we were down sixty-one students, okay? Sixty-one students in a district of sixty-seven hundred kids at the time, okay? And so we, we had a drop of sixty-one students, yet the impact on our chapter seventy funding, the, the increase, at, at the time when we came and presented the budget, I think it was a two hundred thousand dollar increase in chapter seventy-eight, where the previous year we had gotten three point four million dollars. And the increase in students that year was less than a hundred.
It was like fifty-something.
And so you go to adding fifty-six students and you get three point four million dollars as an increase. And then you lose sixty-six and all of a sudden, um, you get two hundred thousand dollars more. And you'll see even this year, our percent increase from state in terms of state aid, I think it's one point three-nine percent, is it? Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
Show me that next one.
Yep. And so here, here's another way to look at it. And again, like I, trust me, I'm not trying to pick on Lemonster. You know, we have five hundred less students. Their foundation budget, I mean, so, excuse me, they have five hundred less students, sorry. And if you look at the foundation budget, the state says, oh, they need a hundred and eleven million dollars to operate. And for us, it's, it's about eighty-eight million. And so twenty-three million dollars more, the state says it takes to educate five hundred less students. And then you look at the chapter seventy-eight and they get pretty much twice what we get. You know, we get a total of thirty-seven million and, and they're getting almost seventy-three.
So does, I mean, I just, this is, I mean, we've seen this, but every time I see it, it amazes me.
Yeah.
Lemonster, I mean, it's a big, geographically, it's a large area. How many schools?
They're about the same as us, they're around thirteen, fourteen.
Thirteen, fourteen schools.
Yeah.
And Wachusett has thirteen or fourteen in five towns.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just doesn't make, that doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't. And I think we, we're trying to break it up a little bit differently and I'm not trying to get people upset, but I'm kinda getting, trying to get people upset. You know, cause it's, this is ridiculous. And I, and it really has to, and there's gonna be, and we'll, we'll share it. There's gonna be some public forums for people to kinda express their, their outrage about all this stuff. But when you look at it like this, I mean, it seems pretty clear, like there's something wrong here.
But when you ask the state, how do they justify it?
You know.
I think it doesn't.
So a lot of, a lot of the problems started, like, so they adjusted how they were calculating the foundation budget with the SOA that they talked about and Bay Path's, that's the Student Opportunity Act. So they were trying to make corrections very, to, to urban school districts and low incomes areas. So they put some, some first leveling in place and extra things that you were getting for, you know, ELL students and, and all these things. And for vocationals, how they were gonna, what the rate for the vocational was. So like, one of the things that upsets Jim, it upsets me too, is if you have a, a special education student at a vocational school, you get an extra hundred dollars for that pupil than we do. Like, what would be the difference? Why would they fund them an extra hundred dollars? Why wouldn't we be the same? I don't want the extra hundred dollars to go away from them, but it is hard when we're sitting behind them going, uh, big problem that you have trouble spending all your money. It's like, what the heck? When we, we have to come and beg for it.
And, and, and look at that.
And know that, know that the taxpayers can't afford it. So we come with, how do we make this as affordable as possible? Because you guys can say no. You can't say no to another budget. We don't, you shouldn't be able to say no to what a class to educate a student, you know, or the townspeople, you know?
Just to take that, that example a little bit further too. Your vocational schools, and my guess is they have zero students who are attending out-of-district special education placements. You know, for us, it's built into the budget at what this point, over four, four million?
The, the, oh, our total, yeah, it's for, a little over four million.
So we have four million in expenses in our budget that they don't even have. And then I would also very much make the case with us having district-wide programs and then also the needs of our students that they're, the acuity and need for special education students that we service is much higher than what they're experiencing in the vocational schools. However, they're getting a hundred bucks more, you know?
So there is a.
And that's not against them. It should, it's more like, shouldn't we get the same hundred dollars?
So there's a dis, obviously, there's a disconnect.
Yep.
And the disconnect isn't so much between you and us.
Exactly.
But it is the, the town voter. They don't understand it.
Right.
And, and it's not, and it's only because I think that we haven't had the opportunity or the wherewithal to be able to provide them with the information that says this.
Right.
This is going on.
Yeah.
That's why you were asking or suggesting to you that you vote for an override to fund our budget.
Right.
Right, and we, there's gotta be a way that happens now. You know, you came to the information sessions that we had a couple of years ago. I think it was a couple of years ago. I was just, I don't know how we do that, but I think that there should be some kind of forum specifically for an explanation.
Yep.
So for the.
I'm willing, I'm, I'm telling you right now, I'm willing to do anything.
Okay.
And, and this is an attempt by us to try to make it more accessible. I, I can tell you that I've been, um, partly because of the mess we were in. Like I've been living and breathing a whole lot of this for three years and I'm just starting to understand it. The funding formula is so complex and I think that's part of the difficulty in all this. It's so convoluted that I don't know if they even know how to fix it, you know? And then they've taken on certain things where they saw like inequities. It's like, I, I wouldn't argue against the Student Opportunity Act, the urbans needed some help. But it only hurts some other districts like Wachusett even more, you know? And so there's, definitely have to be something. And we're hoping, like, and that's why we tried to show a couple different ways around this, that we can make it accessible for people, cause it is confusing. And I definitely pledge to you that yes, whatever we need to do to help communicate that and to answer questions, we've fully committed to that. We've got a much, if you look on our website right now, there's a budget landing page that you can go on and see some of these presentations, also some of the information. And we're, we're honestly hoping to, we're gonna make some short videos for people who can ask questions about this. And if, if, if the town of Rutland's having any events that they want me to attend and, and be available to speak to people.
So YouTube is a great way.
What's that?
YouTube is a great way.
Yeah.
A lot of people know about it. And I think if we were in a position to be able to point to something and they could, somebody could go and look at it, maybe that would be helpful.
Yep, yep, there's, yeah, yeah. It gets, I think, one of the things that's particularly frustrating for us is it's not just the vocationals and it's not just the urbans. And so if you look at this map, these are all the central mass K to twelve regionals. And even when you look at that, the state says we require less money than all those other regionals, all right? We're dead last.
By the way, in the overall state, we're like, we're bottom thirty? We're the thirtieth from the bottom?
In what?
In the overall state, like, yes, for, for.
Out of every single one of these regionals in central mass, we get the least.
Yep, yep, yep. And so we were looking at it today, there are some, like Nishoba gets less chapter seventy than us. But the calculation that's used in terms of what they say it takes to educate a student, Wachusett is the lowest of all these regionals.
We might be the lowest in the whole commonwealth too.
In terms of regional?
Yeah. I, I know we're like between twenty-five and thirtieth from the bottom for the whole state as what they calculate it costs to educate our students. What they, what our foundation budget is.
You'd think they'd start at a level playing field across the state and add on to it, on an as-needed basis.
They, they did with the Student Opportunity Act, but it didn't correct everybody.
They started with us.
We're at a point now too, this has been a problem for quite some years. And it's hit a critical mass. And actually, um, this is the first time, so we're going to UMass on March twenty-fourth. And this is the first time that they have, there's a bill out there to change this funding formula. And you know how long it takes for a bill to go anywhere, but the bill's already, it's out there and it hasn't been. So it is being talked about. So what they're looking for now is like, as where you guys can help, you might have already done it, I, I don't know, advocacy letters to say, like, be specific, not like just a, just a, here's a letter, but just to state, how is this affecting your town and how, you know, you know, so advocacy letters. Um, we're meeting with our representatives.
Meeting with the representatives next week.
The representatives did come to our meeting on the twenty-seventh. We missed a bit of an opportunity there to have them, um, speak, but that's neither here nor there. And, but everyone needs to, like, if you can go to on the twenty-fourth, um, just to show of this is a problem. And having people there, it's, it's at UMass to say, like, to be heard. Because a lot of people believe this wasn't like really talked about, because being in the central mass and the bulk of our politicians being in the, the eastern part of the state, like, we're the forgotten middle. So it's making that show and seeing as they actually are listening, like, having, I, I think there's more than one bill even. There's like three bills.
I, I think it's, it's gonna be something, you're gonna see this on the news when it happens. Cause I, I do think it's gonna be a big, uh, really big event. And I think that's why they're doing it at UMass Amherst, because I think they know it's gonna be a big turnout. You know, this is our chapter seventy increases and this is, this is a result of held harmless. And that's the other thing that's really hurt us is, you know, you lose sixty-six students, but the drop in funding is from, you know, three point four million to seven hundred thousand. And really was two hundred thousand at the beginning, that, and the five hundred thousand is what we gave back to the towns in terms of the assessment. But for that to be reflected in terms of a change in sixty-six students is really crazy. And we're in again, and right now. Um, and we're in again, and right now, the projected, uh, increase in chapter seventy is 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 five hundred and one thousand, and again, uh, it's slightly more students, um, I'm gonna get it wrong again, so why don't you just tell us?
One twenty-two.
One twenty-two, I was actually gonna say that.
You have that number down.
You know, again, that's less than two percent, but you look at the impact on on the funding and that's, that's my issue with Held Harmless. It's, Held Harmless is fine if you're a small district and you're losing students every year, that a substantial percentage of your students. When you're as big as we are and you're talking about fluctuations between half a percent and less than two percent, but it has millions of dollars of an impact on your chapter seventy, it's not fair, it makes no sense. And, you know, I know people ask us questions about, um, well, you got less kids, so, and and we do, and I think I hopefully have shown you tonight that we actually do, and we look to see and we don't need certain positions, we don't continue to fund them. Um, but the problem is, is you lose a hundred and twenty-two students, what that means in a district as large as Wachusett is across three classrooms, you lose one student. So instead of having three classrooms of twenty-two, you get two twenty-twos and a twenty-one. There's not a lot of efficiency there that you can cut, you know? Um, you're not gonna cut a teacher and then all of a sudden have classes of thirty-two or thirty-three, but that's what it equates to, that drop of students. And it's just not a lot when you look at it this way.
So are are these other regions, Atal, Royston, Spencer, Eastbrook Field, are they making money? Is that, is this telling us they're making money?
So the towns have to contribute less money.
Exactly.
Well, what it's gonna, the, it depends on how, how much they're getting, the towns still have to contribute.
But less money than.
What happens, it's like when Monty Tech, uh, no, who was here, Bay Path comes here. So it's quite possible with the town up at the, or the region up at the top, I worked in Southwick, Tallinn, Grandville Regional School District, we were like Bay Path. And Monty Tech is the same way. We were in Hold Harmless, but our students dropped so much that like, you know, in my six years there, we went from, I believe, um, sixteen, seventeen hundred students down to like thirteen hundred students. So you can see, like, if we were dropping seventy students or whatever, eighty students a year, we could actually change, but we were still getting the same amount of funding, and then the state is saying, this is how much you need to operate, so we always operated, we didn't ask for above minimum either, and we, every year, I I love, I sit there jealous back there, that problem of meeting net school spending, um, you know, you'd have, you'd wanna meet net school spending, so, and and the problem of keeping your E and D under five percent or you give it back to the towns, we gave money back to the towns because we were getting plenty of money to operate and we, as they do, we were adding instructional coaches and adding new curriculums and things like that, so they're being funded properly. So it's quite frankly, some of those at the top are being funded properly, so they're being able to better meet the needs of their students, we're not being funded properly, so we're scraping to try to meet the needs of the students.
But there's something, there's something wrong there.
It's bad.
They're, they are, yeah, I'm just looking at the.
We just wanna be funded properly.
Yeah, the, the Royston, uh, Atal area geography is significantly smaller than the Wachusett geography. Why are they getting seventeen thousand and Wachusett is getting thirteen?
Cause they get a better state rep than us.
Well, so, so.
Part of it, so, I think, I think what we would make the argument, right, is the, the problem may not be the add-ons the state has put in there, the problem is the base cost, right? And so I think we would say, okay, you like, if you feel like it it costs more to educate the, in in this district because you have more English learners or you have, uh, more, um, food insecure families or something like that, okay. You know what I mean, like, I I I'm okay with perhaps a Lumbster needing more or or whatever to support families. The problem is though, the base card that they they start with everyone, it's, it's, it's not reasonable.
Right.
And that's where we lose, and I think, let's ask the question, the difference, like, you actually pay more and I'm, we're, we're definitely not picking on Bay Path, I actually, we text each other whenever there's a snow day, so it's not like, and and Tom Brown, who does Monty Tech, is a, a friend of mine, we were both principals at Lumbster. So what happens though is when you have a, a higher, um, calculation net school funding, so take a Bay Path at twenty thousand dollars. The difference between what we get and they get, it's say, it's eight thousand dollars, to get that eight thousand dollars, you don't have to pay a hundred percent of it, you per say, pay the percentage that the state says you can with your minimum local contribution, so maybe that's sixty percent of it, but you're getting forty percent of it without cost. The problem with us is when they hit thirteen thousand, every dollar after that, you're paying a hundred percent of it. And so that's where it really comes in to hurt the towns. And 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 because you're, you're not getting the return on your investment in terms of the money you put in, you're not like getting matching dollars from the state. And you actually spend more money to spend, uh, send a student to Bay Path than you do to Wachusett. It's, it's like a, I think it's a thousand five hundred more for every student, the town pays more to, to, uh, send a child to, to Bay Path, but as you see, they're also, the, those students are getting six thousand dollars probably more, um, than you, than you would, so for your fifteen hundred, you're getting sixty, six thousand dollars worth of additional, uh, support for the student, and so that's where it's unfair for us as well. Um, so, um, you know, just in summary, I just say, we're concerned and I I know you all are too, and we're gonna try to do our part in trying to get the message out and, and getting people to advocate. You know, it does become worse with Hold Harmless, you know, and and we are trying to do things to make sure we're at least not losing students. Um, I think we're primarily, it's happened, I shared a lot of the work we're doing at the high school, it's because the, the number one place we're, we're losing students is between eighth grade and ninth grade. Um, and so we're looking at our programming and asking ourselves, how can we make it better and more attractive to more students? The impact is, um, when we look at revenues, what we have as an increase in our budget isn't reflected as an increase in your assessment, it's a lot higher. And so our, our draft budget increase is five point eight two percent, um, oh, I put down Paxton, I I apologize. And I changed it, I, in your, I I I blew this, so I apologize. It should say Rutland, but I did Paxton.
Cherry made cookies.
I got put the wrong number down too, it's actually supposed to be seven point two one percent.
Do you wanna know what? It's Barry's fault, Barry does his stuff. It has super attention to detail, and they left us in charge.
But what I would say is, is that accelerating factor, cause the other thing that's happening to all the towns is that every year the state's saying, we want you to get, pay a higher percentage of, um, your share of the school budget. And so every year, you're getting like a surcharge of one or two percent, right, by their, their calculations, and so that's why it's seven point two one percent primarily, and and not what the actual increase in the, uh, the budget is. And I'm not here to tell you that five point eight two percent is a small increase, I, we know it's not. Um, but I would say that it becomes much worse because of some of those other factors that we're dealing with.
On your school, the district's website, do you guys have the bills that are up for negotiation? Are they up on, I, I didn't go to your website today, sorry. Are they up there for people to be able to read?
Do you know what, I, um, I'll have to figure out how to get that.
We're gonna have.
Like, this is a piece of our job, like, at least my job sets. New to me.
Well, that's, that and, and, and telling people, it shouldn't just be us, because in all seriousness, we're the ones that are, I mean, parents should know that this is the letter that you should be sending or, you know.
We're gonna have a draft letter, and and that's the piece, honestly, one of the things we're gonna be working on to have up next week is a draft letter for people to see, and if they wanna, we're gonna make it available. And so that date, uh, at UMass Amherst is a week from the coming Monday, and we're gonna have collection sites available, so people just wanna write a letter and have it. Cause if you, uh, bring a letter in person, the person doesn't have to be there. And so if people wanna give us five hundred letters, we'll bring five hundred letters, uh, cause that's what we really need to do, we gotta rattle the cage a little bit. You know, you talk about Hold Harmless, and I don't think we have it in this presentation, but just to share with you, right now, in the state of Massachusetts, last year was two hundred and eleven, alright, this, there, there you go.
Doesn't make us feel any better, I don't really care what the other two hundred and thirty-one or two.
Right, but the issue is, it's, it's two-thirds of the school districts in Massachusetts, and so they really need to, to wake up.
And we, uh, some of them, it's okay that they're in Hold Harmless, like, I'll go back to Southwick, like, if you took if you did an actual calculation based on their enrollment, they would be devastated if they didn't get the aid that they're accustomed to getting, so we need to be real about that, but I think in the last two years with this additional, like, the Student Opportunity Act pu- pulling out, like, there, it was, we added, I think, eighty-something districts last year. So these new ones coming in, these last hundred, aren't in that situation, probably of that huge declining enrollment. And further than that, I think the increase in state aid, and this is where I might be a little off on my numbers, I think it was a little over four hundred thousand dollars, but only ten percent of that increase in state aid, four hundred and twenty million dollars or whatever, uh, increase that goes across the Commonwealth. But less than ten percent of that is going to the Hold Harmless. And the other, which is a third of our districts, so in that aid, that increase in aid is going to those Hold Harmless district, and then the rest of the increase in aid is going to the one, the other one-third.
So they're getting more.
Oh.
Is the governor gonna be out there at UMass?
You know, I don't know, I, this is, the, the timing of the UMass is because, um, that's when the, um, the, uh, version of the budget um, from, from the House is coming forward, and so it's their opportunity for public comment on local aid. And so that's why it's important, that's what the timing is, cause they haven't put out their, their version of the budget. Um, and so, um, yeah, we're, I, I, I'm, I'm very curious, um, but I'm, I'm open people reach that level of frustration and I wanna acknowledge, yeah, we, we're, we're, we're gonna have those things up on the website, and we've been heavy on the presentation piece.
Sure, everyone and anyone who watches afterwards knows this too, but, you know, we're talking about our tax, our state taxes that we pay.
Right.
Is not coming back to us, so if we, if we just paid for this directly and didn't pay state taxes, we'd probably be in a much better position. But yet, here we are giving the money to the state through ta- through taxation, and we're getting a lesser piece of that because of X, Y, because of all the things I've just said, so, it's really our money, we're just not getting it. Um, that's, I think the most frustrating thing is, at the end of the day, it's just, it's, it's our money and we're not seeing it, it's, it's very frustrating.
Unfortunately, I, I think, I hope, wish you guys all the best out there. At UMass, but if she's not gonna be, if the governor's not gonna be there, you guys, good luck. I, I want, fight the fight, but she's not gonna be there, you're not gonna get much of a response, cause she doesn't listen to anybody anyways. With, she doesn't listen to the state reps and stuff, they've been crying this river for three or four years, she doesn't listen to one of them, so.
Not that Karen doesn't have an opinion.
No, it's the truth.
A little optimistic because this is the first time that a bill has actually been put up on the floor, like.
And hopefully it works, but we've been crying these blues for how many years?
A billion.
But it's never been so specific.
It, we, no, it's been specific other years.
They're specific?
This is, I think this is a lot.
We've had this problem, the only nice thing is, is now we have a show, who's got the right numbers, so we have data, whereas before, we didn't have that. Let's not go backwards, let's go forwards.
Well, we have a lot, like, we, it's not me, there's a lot of people who are looking at this much.
Well, I think that, I think Karen's point is that it wasn't exactly told to the Rutland residents in such a clear manner as to what the problem was, and now it is, um, within the time you guys have started, you know, the district.
We used to get the budget in hieroglyphics.
Yeah.
And you couldn't read it, there were, there were numbers there, that, okay, they gave it to us, it was great, it was however many pages, and we'd be like, explain it, well, that, those numbers, and I, it was scary, we could never get to the bottom of it. You guys have done leap years from where we were, it, we appreciate you. I, and I wish you all the best out of UMass.
I guess the best way to put it is confidence level in the existing administration is a lot better than it was.
Thank you.
Uh, and so I'm, I'm gonna go over this just real quick, I just wanna, I know there will be questions from, uh, constituents and folks in town in all the towns, and they say, look, we're hurting, how can you, um, when you, when you ask for things, where are you? How could you not just cut thirty teachers? And, um, I'm sharing this just for people to have the data, and we're, we're about one teacher for every hundred students behind the state. I'm not advocating for us to be at the state level, not at all, okay, and I think I tried to show you earlier tonight that a lot of times if we're adding positions, it's cause we're taking positions from other parts of the district. Um, if we were at the state level, we'd, we'd add ninety-seven additional teachers to the district, we're not asking that. But I, I use it as more of a reference of why it's, why we can't just eliminate positions. Cause we're already at a, a, a pretty low staffing level, we're making it work, and we're trying to be very selective about what we add. Um, but that's why it would hurt so much if we had kinda monumental, uh, cuts. And, uh, this is another way of looking at that, I talked about our dark peers, these are just the towns that, uh, uh, state compares us to uh, when they look at our achievement data, and if you look, um, in blue is the state average and in green is Wachusett. Um, and when you look at like teachers, we're second from the bottom, uh, and administration, we're tied for the bottom. And so, again, I'm not saying that, cause we think we should be at the state level, I am saying that it's why we are so protective of the current staffing level that we have, because if we made, uh, reductions or had cuts, it really would very much harm our ability to operate the district. Just so people are aware.
Second, we're so much higher in paraprofessionals.
Yes.
Yeah, we are.
Is that becau- which, I'm, I, I'm sure there's a reason, what I'm saying is, is it because we don't have enough teachers, so we hire the paraprofessionals?
I, I did a bad job, and so usually I call that out, and so I apologize for not doing it. No, the one area you'll see that we're higher is paraprofessionals, and my guess is, when I come back next year, um, if you'll let me come back, is that, um, you're gonna see that number go down. Because one of the ways we got some, so many of those positions is we asked ourselves, is this a position that is better suited to a paraprofessional or to a teacher? And every time we make a decision, it's about, you wanna maximize the impact on kids.
Sure.
And so, we, we, we do have fewer paraprofessionals than we had, even when this was taken last year. Um, I, I can get it for you, but I don't know the exact numbers, but that is another way that we've, we've added some of these positions. And I wanna be clear too, like, paraprofessionals can be worth their weight in gold, and make a real difference in a lot of situations, but what we wanna be asking in a lot of these, and whenever we make a decision about personnel, we wanna ask, what do we really need, you know, and how, how can we fund it? And so we have been trying to do that, so I think that number's gonna be down, but yes, that is the one area where we had, we had a lot of staffing.
I'm gonna say paraprofessionals too, we're a big school district, we have a big, we have a larger than normal, um, like, some of the smaller districts, um, special educate, it's special ed students, so that's gonna play into that number a little as well.
One quick note on this page, it was brought up at one of our recent meetings that the district is top-heavy. So this is, is very clearly showing that that's not the case, so for anyone, again, um, this is, this is the, the what we need to show the public to make sure that they understand that that's not the case.
Yeah, this is, and this is all like straight off of the Desi website, and so they.
I'm just saying that this was said, and I'm just trying to, hopefully that gets out there.
No, and that's what I'm trying to get out there too, we're not supplying, we, we, these numbers go straight to the state. And so, we're not making these calculations, they are, and I, just trying to double down on what you're saying.
Like, we are trying to just, like, dissolve some of those rumors that we hear, our secretaries have secretaries. And I watch.
I don't think it's more of that, I hear more often is, how many principals do we need at all of these schools? And I know you're, you're required to have them, that is what needs, this law says we have to have this, you gotta spell it all out because some people don't wanna spend hours on the Desi website to learn that.
I, this is the first district I've walked in that there's one principal, one assistant principal at every school, everywhere else I've worked, there's usually one principal, then, uh, an assistant principal that does academics and an assistant principal that does student discipline. We have one assistant principal that's doing academics, discipline, and being team chairs. Like, so, and then even the secretaries, this is the first school district I've walked into that there's not two secretaries, like, a school year secretary that does the attendance and the, and then a principal secretary, we have one secretary except for the high school, the high school's bigger and, um.
That should, that should get out, but that should get out there and spell that out as.
Trying to dispel some of the rumors by saying, hey, look, we're not overstaffed.
And that's why we're putting this stuff up, and we're not saying, we're not crying poor us, I think we're just trying to say, hey, this is what our real staffing is.
I think, by the way, the, the one where you have Wachusett up top, don't use that, it makes it look like you guys are higher than everyone else. Stick with the other one.
We just didn't have the, we just weren't, you can't put the, you can't put the names, so.
It's good to look at it different ways, but like, if you're, if you're showing this to the public in, in any way, shape or form, that, like, I, when I first looked at that, I was like, wait, why are we on top of everything, last time I saw this, we were, so, yeah, this, people don't read, people just look.
Totally appreciate the feedback, and thank you for, I would've been mortified if I forgot about the par. And thank you for, I would've been mortified if I forgot about the parents, cause usually I make a point of that.
I figured we were just using them, because it was less expensive than a teacher.
I think that's, I think that's very true for what they did, that they were doing.
I'm not saying that it was the right thing, I'm just, that's, you know.
I think there's absolute truth in that, in terms of how they were approaching things. And so I just share this again, so people in the public know, like, if we cut, um, personnel, what that would look like. And the typical model we use in education is that you'll get two-thirds cost savings for eliminated positions, and that's because if you eliminate positions, you typically are gonna owe unemployment and some other factors. And so, basically what they, uh, figure out is that for every three teachers that you cut, you would get a cost savings of two. Um, because of contracts, because of the, um, that we have, because actually there's a law, uh, about, about teachers having professional status. If, um, and they get that after three years, if you cut staff, you have to cut people with between one and three years' experience. Um, and what happens then though, is those people are usually making substantially less. And so it kinda compounds the, the benefit of eliminating positions, and so.
Do you folks pay unemployment?
Directly, yes.
Oh, so it's just like municipal government, you only pay it when you need it, you don't pay it?
We don't pay a percentage.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and so.
I know everybody pays unemployment, I just needed to know, we elect a municipal government.
Um, so what we do is, we took salary estimates for those people who might've worked between one and three years. We looked at the average benefits package, like, how many people take family health, how many people take, um, you know, individual health, and some, how many people don't take health at all. And basically, our, our, our projections are the same as last year. We'd save about fifty thousand dollars for every teacher we eliminated, or twenty-two thousand five hundred for a paraprofessional. Because we have eliminated a lot of the positions that were unnecessary for, for paraprofessionals. Really, the paraprofessionals we have now are needed for preschool, kindergarten, um, which is the model used throughout the state. Um, and then also, uh, paraprofessionals who are directly servicing kids who are on IEP. So we really don't have a lot of paraprofessional positions that we could eliminate, so it would, it would be teachers if we needed to do that. Um, and, you know, the quick math, I'm looking at it, about half a million dollars would be fif- uh, ten, ten teachers, so. Um, alright, and so, these are the numbers, I appreciate everyone's, uh, focus, or attention, and kindness. And Michelle's gonna walk you through the numbers. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, um, just your enrollment update, I'm looking at Rutland, you dropped actually forty-four students, um, which is two-point-six-eight percent. Um, so that gives you a smaller share of the actual, um, of the actual total, um, enrollment. I do wanna point out these enrollment numbers, cause people do get confused by this. These enrollment numbers that we share with you here are students from each of your towns sitting in the seats, alright? And that's how we allocate our transportation and, um, the discretionary piece of the budget. Um, the debt service is based on your enrollment at the high school, um, so the Rutland students at the high school. If you do look at the foundation budget calculation, those are students that we're financially responsible for, so the number's different. Like, these student, these here do not include students that are choicing out or, um, um, through school choice or charter school. So those are included in the foundation. And then, um, also are, the preschool's a little different, so, so there's discrepancies. So you see six thousand six hundred and thirty here, but if you looked at what the, um, um, the foundation budget was, I think it's six thousand six eighty-five. So it's, the numbers are different, but people get confused by this. This is kids in the town, sitting in the seats in the schools, okay? So if we had school choice, by the way, and they came from other towns, you're not paying, like, they're not gonna be included in those enrollment numbers. If they come from Worcester, Rutland's not gonna pay for them. Gotcha, okay?
Does this number include graduates?
No. Cause they've graduated.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, you say forty-four, down forty-four people.
Oh, no, so that could be just, I don't know where you lost for, it could be that you had, well, you had an increase going to, um.
Bay Path.
Bay Path. So that can be your decrease here.
Alright, I was just, I was just curious.
No, it's a good question.
Yeah.
And so one of the things that's happening, I shared a little bit earlier, we're doing a, uh, Town Growth and Facilities Task Force, and we're doing that, we did that through grants with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. One of their tasks, and they're gonna start doing it this, um, uh, this spring, is they're gonna be reaching out to families that no longer are attending school in the district. Primarily, they're focusing at the high school level, cause that's where we see it the most.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we're hoping to get some of those answers.
So. Um, so here's your minimum local contribution, um, ha- as Jim had said. How they calculate your minimum local is based on what they see that your ability as a town is to pay for that part of the foundation budget. And so they try to get you to that target share, um, and so you see a bigger increase than like Sterling or Princeton, cause they're closer to that target share, so they, you get a little more of an increase every year. So you're starting out of the gate that your increase, based on what the state is saying, is four and a half percent. That's like your starting base of, this is how much your, your assessment is gonna go up. Um, I'll try to go through these quickly, you guys know, since I've been here. Year to year, I just try to keep getting better at allocating by appropriation, how, how each of these appropriations, um, are funded. So the first one, salaries and stipend, you see the four-point-nine-two percent. Our cost of living adjustment across the board for, um, FY twenty-six is a two-point-seven-five percent cost of living adjustment. Most of our contracts, um, have, um, steps involved in them, and between those steps, so people who are moving along the steps get more than that two-point-seven-five percent increase, cause some of our steps, each of the grids are a little different. Some could have a two percent increase between steps, some could have a four percent increase between steps. We're kinda actually through our negotiation process, I think when I, uh, we're on our third, where we've blown those up and said, we're giving the same increase across the board, so we can plan a little better. So if we can negotiate those, it, it helps a little bit. So our actual, like, if I take an average with people stepping up and getting the cost of living, um, people stepping up could be getting a six percent increase, so it averaged out to a little bit over four percent, just to meet contractual obligations.
Now, do they get those steps re- do they have to meet certain goals, or is it just, you've been here six months, you get a step?
It's a year, it's done on a yearly basis, it's only done on July one, it's not performance-based at all.
So regardless of how these things are done, it's an automatic.
You must see that in your, your police firefighter contracts, no?
I don't know, I don't see it in the real world, so that's why I'm asking.
No, I know, it's not a real world thing, it was an adjustment for me to walk into education too, but it's, it is.
It's why it's so important, it's first.
We should've gone to school to be a teacher.
Yeah, it is, but it is not merit, merit-based.
Yeah, it's, it's why it's so important, the first three years, it is a big deal if we keep teachers after those three years, because then you're, you're making a commitment for however many years, you know, your steps.
And how many steps do they have?
Every contract's a little different, to be honest.
Depends on the contract.
Four years, is it seven years, is it fifteen years?
We have some that are six and seven, we have some that, what is the teacher, fourteen? The teachers are fourteen. Yeah, so they're all, they're all over, it's all through, you know, collective bargaining. So we, we try, we did, I am gonna say, we did great, um, in our last round of collective bargaining to be where we are at. If you went out and compared to other, um, districts, they're get, they were getting more than two-point-seven-five. We're running into collective bargaining, starting next year for FY twenty-seven, so.
With teachers.
With teachers. And they, and because it's mostly teachers, um, they drive what the rest of the district is gonna look like.
Yeah.
You know, cause you're, you can't, you have to maintain equity amongst everyone, so. Um, so also in that salary and stipend line, it includes like our, our, you know, um, substitutes, things like that. I've also included, um, we do have, um, one bargaining unit that has not, um, settled their, or ratified their contract. So I have a, a year's worth of retro sitting in there, um, and, um, what their incre- like, trying to estimate what their increase will be, um, for both this, cause they have not settled. So what this year's increase will be, and what anticipated next year's increase will be. Um, we also have, um, we call them lane changes, so not only if they get additional degrees, do they up a step, but they can move a lane for additional, um, salary advancement for getting a degree. Um, and then there's, we have a little bit of retirement benefits for the ten teachers who are retiring. Um, they get, uh, a little bit of a sick time buyback, not huge, but some. And then, I've included about eight to ten, um, of those positions that we talked about, which it's way more than eight to ten positions, to, to leave that in the salary line, to be able to add that staff. So that's where we're coming to a four-point-nine-two percent increase. The next line, the benefits and insurance, um, the, our health insurance, our commercial plans, the interest, uh, the increase in the, um, rate was seven-point-one percent, so we did rather well there. We have done remarkably well, they weren't lying, when they were saying that eighteen percent is the norm. It has been the norm, and we are Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the, it's been Blue Cross Blue Shield. And I would bet they're probably in the Maya Trust, and that trust did really well, really poorly this year. Um, so, um, the Medicare plans, which go from January to Ja- to December, so this is like a half year, their increase was sixteen and a half percent, so we did see it on the, on the, um, Medicare, um, the Medicare supplemental plans. Um, and if anyone was at the presentation on the twenty-seventh, from when we did this, um, they, we were actually at an eight percent increase, and they came back, the, we have a PEC who determines if we make any plan design changes, they took advantage of a decrement to bring that down point to seven-point-one percent. So we were actually at an overall budget of five-point-ninety-two percent, so it brought us down that tenth of a percent, so adjusted that. Um, the instructional support, that is all of our, um, high-quality instructional material contracts. We're in our second year of that ELI program that Jim talked about. Um, um, that also includes all of our instructional support, supplies and materials, our technology copiers and leases, and some contracted services for student support. Um, so I do wanna point out that we are comparing this budget to last year's budget, we did do a little flip-flopping in there. Um, so that if next year, when you see it, that increase isn't gonna look so big when we, when we, cause we've made some appropriation transfers.
Back up, what per- that twenty-two, twenty-four million, that's just your share of the insurance, that's not the employee's share.
No, okay, so there's more in that line, I'm sorry. And that also includes, um, our, our insurance is probably about eighteen million, our share of it. So also included that, in that line is Medicare, the employer Medicare portion, so one-point-four-five percent of those salaries. And also included in there is, we also pay Worcester County Retirement, that's about three million dollars, maybe a little bit more than three million dollars this year, that was like an eleven percent increase. So sorry, I didn't ca- capture all the pieces there, so that's not just insurance.
What percentage of the health insurance does the school pay?
So we have various plans, our, our most contributory part of it, that most of our employees are on, is a seventy-eight percent. They pay twenty-two, we pay seventy-eight. If they choose a more expensive plan, um, we have a seventy-five, like, it's the same, um, HMO plan that has, um, no de- no, um, no deductibles, that goes to a seventy-five-twenty-five. And then we have a PPO plan, if people are going to the PPO, it's fifty-fifty. And that works same with the, um, the retiree plans as well, so.
On the seventy-eight percent, I'm sorry, what did you say the deductible was?
The, the, there's an, there's two plans that are HMO plans, and one is like a, a, a higher quality plan with no deductibles, so they, it's that seventy-five-twenty-five. But the plan where they have some small deductibles, we pay seventy-eight. So we pay the same, will pay the same amount toward it. They choo- if they choose that more expensive plan, we are only paying what we're paying for the, the, um, other plan, so.
Our biggest challenge is that any change to insurance has to go through a PEC, which they created, I, I think it's over fifteen years ago now. Um, and so, Michelle's actually gotten them to take, uh, two considerations of, uh, plan changes that have actually resulted in some savings, um, but we're up against it, cause we don't have control over it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, operations and maintenance, the next one, you're seeing a four-point-five-four percent increase. What is included in there? Um, our heating fuel increase was really modest, one-point-eight percent, we've already negotiated that. We're actually next week negotiating for FY twenty-seven, we've been ahead of that. Actually, we had a decrease last year, I don't know if you remember that, but, so we've been pretty good with that. Um, we, this is for all of our ongoing maintenance, um, and what we are adding here, that significant increase, is we do have, again, some, some projects that we need to do at the high school. It's just critical needs, um, one of them is the auto shop floor, did you already show those pictures?
Yeah, he talked about it.
Yeah, so we need to repair that, um, and then they need a new phone system, and then we have some serious concrete issues that we need to address. We have millions of dollars of concrete issues around the high school that we need to address, just as you guys know what those concrete issues are like, right, at Naugogon, those others. We, there's some that are just really at the point of, we gotta fix them. So we're, we put eight hundred thousand for those three projects in the budget. Then our pupil services line, you're seeing a huge increase there. We have been operating our athletic revolving account, that's where we put all our mon- um, all of the fees that, um, parents pay into this athletic revolving fund. We have high fees in the district for what we're charging kids compared to other districts, um, but we aren't collecting enough to cover the cost of athletics. So I have moved, um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars out for athletic transportation. Um, we can't have negative balances in revolving funds, the DOR, you're paying them out of the general fund anyway, because you can't have a negative balance, so the DOR just a budget for them appropriately. So that's part of it, and the other part of it is, we have AEDs that we, we, um, pay either fourteen or sixteen thousand dollars a year to just replace the batteries, and this has been an ongoing thing. When I first got here, it wasn't even budgeted for, and the second year, I'm like, okay, I got a budget for this. And come to find out, we have a, an opportunity to replace all our AEDs, that'll be sixty thousand dollars, but they don't require sixteen thousand dollars a year to replace the batteries. So, um, anyway, so we're doing, that's where you're seeing that huge increase. The special ed tuitions, you see at four-point-one million dollars, um, we really, it really costs ten, over ten million dollars is what's anticipated for the special ed tuitions. We are gonna de- see a decline in our enrollment. Um, to, so it is about the same as what we paid last year. I am going to be using four-point-five million, and we get a circuit breaker reimbursement. I am still trying my hardest to, uh, y- how circuit breaker works, it's a reimbursement program. That is one program that I worry about a little, just like the transportation reimbursement program. If anything ever happened where the state didn't have enough money, because it's a reimbursement program, what do you think we're not gonna get? So how, what the state allows you to do.
Take cuts in the, in the, in the.
What the state allows you to do is leave one year in your circuit breaker, and so you can budget for that, so it's like a year behind, we're nowhere near there yet. Um, we could leave five, we got five-point-two million this year, that five-point-two million could be sitting there. When I started here, we were well under a million dollars, and we're using reimbursements that we haven't even gotten yet to, in our budget. So I'm still doing that, um, I think our circuit breaker revolving is maybe two-point-three million, much better than the under a hundred million that I walked in at. But best financial practice would be to not be touching, I shouldn't be touching, um, the current year's reimbursements. But we still have to do it, because there's no way I cannot do it, given where you guys are at. And then we get, um, the IDEA, we use one-point-five million out of the IEDA, um, grant, um, federal grant, to cover some of those tuitions. Um, the other operating costs, so who asked about the school choice and the charter? That's our school choice charter out costs, right there, one-point-five million dollars. It did go down, but that's what we pay to, for the kids that we get their, we get that, to count them, but we're paying that much to go out, and it's about fifty-fifty. Like, it's like seven-hundred-and-thirty for one, and like seven-hundred-and-seventy for the other, or something like that. Um, so that's where we're paying for that. The transportation, um, you're seeing ten million dollars there. Um, you're seeing ten million dollars there. It is a lot more than that to do our transportation. That is reduced by our transportation reimbursement, which is uh, like three million dollars is what it was in the budget. So we reduce what it costs for transportation um with that. We did, I don't know if you remember my first year here, um, the trans- we were lucky this year. Jim said I would explain this a little. When I came and we were doing the budget for FY twenty four, we didn't have the end of year report done. So they gave us on our cherry sheet like a two million dollar um transportation reimbursement. That transportation reimbursement, they did change it. Once I did the end of year report, it was done. So that the next cherry sheet came out, it was like two point seven million. Some of the towns did come back and say, well, are you gonna give that to us? I don't remember, I'm like, yeah, the budget's passed. No, we ended up getting about three million, but I had to use that this year. Like, so it got used in this year and it saved us from our, our, it's basically saved us. From um, the, the roof repairs and things, so that, like, I had to spend it. But it didn't, it avoided us having to use E and D. So I'm kinda glad that we didn't give that back cuz we didn't find ourselves in a budget shortfall this year.
That's the other thing we hear perennially at the town meeting. Is I pass all those buses, there's nobody on those buses, so you need to, you need to, you gotta spell it out. Cause every year we have that discussion.
And they're right, and it's frustrating and unfortunately. Yeah, right, um, by, by, by being a regional school, we have to provide busing or offer it for every single student.
And I, yeah.
How about if you charge the surcharge?
Can I tell you, we wouldn't get our transportation, we sign a certification and the buses. We have to have capa- um, what do you call it? Capacity of seventy five percent or something like that. Or we wouldn't get our reimbursement. So whether the kids are actually getting on and using it. Um, like, or when are people seeing it is when they're just getting dropped off or they're just getting picked up. If I talk to the person who does the transportation and I see those buses are full. Like according to what I get, like that's in versatrans and how they're sending those buses out. Our buses are not one or two students on them, so.
No, but every year we hear that same thing at the town meeting. And it's just cut it off and put it out there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Subjecting by the traffic going into the high school every morning.
You know, where you could. Instead of surcharge, but could we?
I think at one point. Okay, so at one point.
To drop off.
At one point, I think the district did collect um for busing and it would be kids that are. Like we still, still do transport kids that are under a mile and a half. You could actually charge a fee for the kids that are under a mile and a half. I don't think you can for the ones over a mile and a half.
No, I'm, I'm not saying.
He's, he's saying for people who actually drive their kids to school.
Oh, charge them. The high school does charge a parking fee.
It's a great idea.
I'm kinda serious about it because I can't go to a sports game without getting hit up to five dollars to park. Why, why don't, I know the kids pay for.
The kids pay to park, it's nominal though.
The drop off lines. Help us out with that. And then they ride the bus, it'd be worthwhile.
Yeah, I don't think this is a unique problem for what you.
Oh, I don't think it's unique to what you, but it's. If you're stuck in the traffic going in there, it's a unique problem.
Traffic's horrible at all the schools. And I, you know, this is another thing that got worse in the pandemic.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Is the number of kids that park there even an issue? I mean, is it that many kids that?
At the high school? Pretty much seniors get parking, uh, other, other, other grade levels. Most of those kids can't get a parking pass, so it's pretty much a senior privilege. And uh, yeah, no, they fill the entire student lot.
And how much do we charge them?
I don't know, off the top of my head.
Paid it this year.
Well, the reason I'm asking.
I'm gonna, I'm at about like a hundred bucks, like I don't think, was it, is it more?
I think I paid a hundred and fifty for my kids and that was a few years ago.
So that like, I was saying a hundred cuz I just know the other districts. I used to work in work fifty, so I'm going, okay, maybe we're. Cuz our fee, we do feed the ki- the kids are getting feed more than other places. So like, it's cool, yeah.
I mean, that, that is a great deal cuz the cost to ride the bus that we gotta pay for is about two thousand dollars a student. When you look at your number of students to the thirteen million. So, that's, that's a great deal.
Dollars to the school for a parking pass, but the kid is buying a car paying for, like that's. Whatever, they're like, that's not really a comparison right there.
It's a number comparison.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Hold on, I'm gonna dig into this number a little deeper for you, if I can find the right piece of paper. Because that ten million dollars also includes special ed transportation. We don't get reimbursed on special ed transportation. We only get reimbursed on regular ed transportation, so our regular ed transportation is nowhere near ten million dollars. That's special ed in and out of district. So we are, our regular ed transportation in this, in this budget is five point three million dollars. We're getting reimbursed over three million dollars. So for regular ed transportation. It's two point three million dollars. So you can do the math on the students on that. It's nowhere near. Yeah, and it's, um, we do get for special ed, through the circuit breaker process. We do get reimbursement for transportation at a very low rate, so.
Even if it was two thousand dollars to transport a kid to school for the entire year, it's like, that's nothing. You think about the cost of a cab or the cost of.
Be nothing to you.
Two thousand, two thousand dollars for an entire year of transportation?
No, I'm saying for one hundred and fifty dollars to park, that student is not riding the bus, from which all of us now have to pay. Two thousand dollars for that student who's not riding the bus, less now because of the number I have. Could be a thousand dollars or, but that's what I'm saying, so parking there, not using the bus. We're still paying for that student to use the bus. So that's a great deal. I, I'm, I'm not arguing, say good or bad. I'm just looking at a comparison here. Whether they use it or not, we're still paying for it.
We do, uh, we do have to, like I said, we do monitor our ridership in order to get that regular ed reimbursement. We have to, so if they are driving, they're not in the ridership of the bus. So I can look up how many students we say are actually riding. That would be a better, better, um. And it's not, it's nowhere near our student body. I, I don't have the end of year report. If you guys ever looked at the financial end of year report, it's on schedule seven. It puts ridership right on there and what's reimbursable. So, yeah, is what it is. It's not part of net school spending, you guys, just so you know, these last two are not part of net school spending in the foundation budget that they're calculating at the state. So you got no argument there on this, really. And then the debt service is based on high school enrollment. Um, it is um, uh, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars left on principal and sixty eight thousand nine hundred dollars. In um, in a interest, so next slide.
Gina was uh, kind enough to look it up, hundred fifty dollars to park it down.
Oh, thank you, Gina.
And then day passes, you have to pay a certain amount. There's a few day passes, you have to pay X amount for days.
So here is our revenue. The first three are our state revenue or our state aid. You can see that chapter seventy eight, which is part of the foundation budget, is an increase of five hundred and one thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. That represents seventy five dollars per students from the foundation aid, cuz we're in that whole harmless. Um, the transportation, um, again, we're, I took that right off of the cherry sheet. So right now, based on what was submitted for being reimbursable, I think that was, I wish I wrote this number down and I never have. It's a little over eighty percent. I think it's eighty one percent. Um, they are fighting for us to get a higher than eighty one percent. And then charter tuition aid, I'm gonna look a little further into this. This went down a little. I think this is based on a calculation from the state. It's not on actual students. It's like some reimbursement for charter, charter schools. Um, and I don't know how they calculate that out. So the next four pieces are um, pieces of revenue that I get to try to guess at, how much are we gonna get? So that Medicaid number has stayed seven fifty since I've been here. Um, we have been getting more than that and that's how we have actually accumulated a little excess and deficiencies. Because these revenues have been understated in the last couple of years. We haven't gotten excess and deficiency because we've underspent our expenses. Um, because that's the two ways you can get excess and deficiency. So our Medicaid number is predicted to come in for this year at a hundred and fifty thousand. For a piece called our claims, our administrative claims and our direct claims. So that's where we're targeting, so I upped it. I'm being a little, um, I'm, I'm being, I'm stretching it out a little. Just because I think we will get it, but I don't, there's another thing called a cost report that we could get a little bit more back on that. But with the, with the current political climate, don't know exactly where Medicaid is, is trending towards. So um, adding more, but not being overly optimistic about what it's gonna look like next year. Interest for the past couple of years, interest rates have, have been really well. And we've been lucky to have a treasurer for the past couple of years that has been very prudent in getting our money into M M D T. And moving it as quickly, you know, at the last minute to get every day of interest that you can, cuz the rates are much higher there. Um, and you can move it in and out without, without penalty. Um, so we have received interest last year, I think it was over six hundred thousand. This year, we're tracking about six hundred thousand, but again, with the political climate and rates dropping. I don't wanna go that full six hundred thousand and then find out we're not gonna get that revenue. Um, the miscellaneous revenue, we track, um, there are some students who get some out of district transportation. That belongs to another town, we call them bus bill backs. We've been tracking about three hundred and fifty thousand for the past three years on that, so I upped that one as well. I'm pretty secure on that one. I'm pretty sure we're gonna get that one. What I did with E and D, our E and D sits at two point five million or two point three million, something like that. Which is about two percent or a little less than the two percent of the hundred and twenty nine thousand dollar budget. Um, I am going to upfront use E and D. Because um, the chapter seventy eight, they're saying they're gonna put that back to the hundred and four dollars that we received last year. So if I go from the seventy five to hundred and four dollars per student, instead of giving it back to you like we did last year. As Jim said, we gave you back the half a million dollars. Um, I'm gonna just pretend like we're getting it and here you go, we'll throw it into E and D. Um, and if it does come back to us, then it ends up in, in E and D. Um, and then the other three hundred thousand dollars, they're saying the same thing. They're fighting to get one hundred percent on transportation reimbursement. I don't think we'll get one hundred percent on transportation reimbursement, but I'm betting on that maybe we'll get the eighty seven. Uh, it's eighty six point nine percent that we got this year. I'm betting maybe we'll get that and that equates out to about three hundred thousand dollars. So if we get those extra pieces, they're not gonna sit in E and D. I'm not gonna have them, you know, like. If we don't get them, I'm not gonna have them, but if we do get them, they'll, they'll just replenish the E and D. Um, so that is, I'm increasing revenues as much as I can to get the assessments down there.
Could you explain to me how we get revenue from Medicaid?
So it's a reimbursement process. So we have students on Medicaid. If we have. Special related service providers who.
You have some services that we provide as a school.
Take care of the kids.
Yes, to take care of the kids, so.
Could be occupational therapy, could be um, physical therapy, it could be um, any of those things. And sometimes it's um, it could be uh, ABA services. And, and so what happens is uh, those employees get a random moment in time, they record the work that they've done. If the parents signed off on allowing the school district to try to get Medicaid reimbursement for those services provided. They uh, they get approved and we get that back, uh, or portion of it from the uh.
What percentage of that do you get back?
Oh, I'd have to ask our Medicaid manager. We pay a little fee to go th- it's like, it, it, this is a weekly, like, tracking process. This is a huge thing. I don't know when they um, hired the Medicaid manager.
Some issues in the district, probably five or six years ago.
That's definitely not a hundred percent.
Well, uh, how I'm gonna look at this is that, these people are.
He's asking about the reimbursement.
Oh, the reimbursement.
Isn't a hundred percent for the services provided.
Oh, um, no, cuz there's some costs, like it, it's, there's some costs associated with. Doing the program and going through the claims process, but what they're doing is they're paying. They're paying us for providing those services. So they're saying.
Paying for the services.
We're providing the services, so they're saying, I'm gonna pay you this much money for using your occupational therapist. Instead of, so, cuz they didn't go to some other provider.
Right, it's almost like, you know, the child would have needed occupational therapy, even if, if they weren't in school, they'd have to go to a private provider to get that service. And so the government's just saying, we would pay for this if they went to a private provider, so we're gonna pay for it because you're giving it in school.
Okay, so we don't, do we actually pay that bill to the provider? We don't.
We're actually a provider.
We have the, we're the provider. We have, yeah, so they're paying, yeah, so, um, but it is a very intricate process. And we've actually been, um, our district has actually, we're collecting a lot, has been commended for. The work that we do to get this, to get this, so it's like really a great thing. Um, but again, the Medicaid program, who knows what's happening there, so. Not, not scared yet, but I think that's it for me. Well, just your town assessment. So if you had come, again, on the twenty seventh, I don't know where you were. But I, with additional revenues and that little drop in insurance, basically, um. If you've been following along since we've been talking to people since December, we were at, this was basically what we were gonna say. If we were at a level service budget, um, so I tried to dig really hard to get the best that I can possibly do. And still provide some services to our students.
I wanna be respectful to everyone's time. We have a couple slides. Tell me, I was gonna cruise through them very quickly. If you want more details, please let me know. But I also wanna respect, if you're like, we've seen enough, if you can give us the hook. Um, just sharing that, um, first of all, thank you again for the security improvements. On the top two projects on our capital list are curbing sidewalks, parking lots at the Reverend Schools, they're having concrete issues. Um, we've been trying to fill them in with asphalt. We don't expect that this is gonna be supported for this number. We completely get that. We're just sharing with you that um, this is the, our primary concern right now at the school buildings. And then also uh, at Naqwaug, they have a, a couple carpets that right now are very unhygienic and so we're looking towards putting tile in. So I'll show you briefly, this is the auto floor. And that was the tractor that went through it in the, in the, uh, in August, I believe. And this is actually the hole that was left and you can see that uh, really the entire floor and the, the room is cut off now, was condemned. And so we're hoping to uh, fix that this summer. Um, but the other thing that you'll hear about from the district in terms of what we're gonna be asking. Um, is the towns to consider is whether or not we would be allowed to create a capital stabilization fund. We've gotten approval from school committee, but we would also have to get um, approval from uh, all the towns. And so the reason why we're, we're advocating for the establishment of fu- fu- the, the um, the fund. And it's important to know that um, we're just seeking to establish it, we're not asking for funding for it. Is that when we have emergencies like we had this year, if you could have a fund that. Um, you know, over time, you can build up, you're okay and could possibly handle a half a million. Uh, that was unexpected in terms of expenses and Michelle shared this earlier, we put in five hundred thousand dollars in the budget. Um, uh, last year, um, our, was that two years ago, last year?
For this year, we had five hundred thousand in capital projects. The, next year, we're asking for eight hundred.
But we're still afraid, like, we didn't expect the concrete floor to go down, um, and we weren't expecting for the roof to fail. And so we're just desperately trying to have some long term plan for how we can handle those unexpected expenses. And, you know, I think probably longer term, what we would do is ask to put it into the budget, but then offset it with E and D or something to that effect. To try to build that fund out.
We need some savings.
School committee's been working on a, a draft policy, which we would share with all the towns, so people could see how would this actually happen. Um, right now, the draft policy, um, we'd need two thirds of approval of. Um, right now, the draft policy, um, we'd need two thirds of approval of school committee. It would not be for expenses less than, I think it's twenty five thousand dollars right now and all those things. But if they pass that policy or the draft, we'd make it available to the town, so they would have some comfort on whether or not they wanted to voted to do it. Um, I think the one other thing we would want people to know about this is we're not talking, if we have larger capital projects. I know most towns would rather have us do a debt exclusion and we would continue to do that. Uh, that way, it's not coming off, it's a separate item that isn't harming your overall budget as much. And the uh citizens can choose whether or not they wanna support those projects. And so we're not doing it to replace that process, we would still engage in that if there were major needs or major capital needs. Um, but it would help us in the short term to have some stability in case we have more um more failures. Which honestly, at the, at this point, the high school's over twenty years old since it had the renovation and systems are starting to go. Um, and so the important thing I would just say is, it's it's not a change of practice. It's more just us trying to be more financially proactive and secure moving forward. And then people had asked earlier tonight um about advocacy. And so um, the big thing, we're trying to build out our our budget website. I think one of the things we need to be working on um in the next few days, to be honest with you, is giving people those advocacy opportunities. Um, give them a copy of that letter, let them know where they can drop it off if they are frustrated by the state funding. Um, then also, we have that upcoming state conference uh for Ways and Means for Representatives and that's gonna happen a week from Monday. We'll have that information um on the uh, on the district website as well. Um, and then coming up, um, I think you guys are still on on hold for May tenth, although I guess it may be a little bit later. But hopefully, um, that's on, that's on time. And that's it for us, unless people have any questions.
So, Joe, I guess the only thing that I would ask is, I noticed that they, their increase is five point, oh, six percent. Rounding it up to the, to our job. Would you feel comfortable in saying that it's reasonably. That certain is the wrong word, um, but it's reasonable to expect. That growth like that would continue over the next four or five years.
I think our, when we looked at, Michelle did some projections. And I think that for us to maintain level services, right? So um not cut positions and things of that nature, we've estimated that probably, would you say, three to five years?
Like, yeah, for three, like the next, yeah, three years.
Next three to five years, we would estimate level services for us would be between four and a half and five and a half percent.
Alright, so you're talking, so six percent growth in total would be reasonable.
Yep.
And obviously, that might, that's just a budget, it has nothing to do with the. They, you know, how much they feel we should pay.
Yeah, correct.
But if that stays at what it is, then maybe the seven percent is the number that we should be at. Uh, I'm just, um. I think Austin's done a good job in trying to put together a a plan for where we think we're going. And he's used some numbers that are, numbers that he feels are conservative numbers. And just to be on the safe side kinda thing, we have a number for the schools are running about ten percent. And I'm just not sure, I'm I'm not comfortable that that's um reasonable. But I don't wanna go ahead and say we should cut it back to six percent or seven percent. Um, if it's, if it's not reasonable to do that, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get an assessment as to where we might be.
Is that for both school, like for just education in total, or so for both Bay Path and?
Yeah, I'm trying to think what Bay Path was today, I don't know if they were eleven or nine, I couldn't.
No, they were twenty one percent increase because.
It's a large increase, but we have thirty three additional students or something like that.
And that, that was a fact I was gonna mention, what's really hard is that changes in your population have a huge impact. Uh, both for us as well, I remember in our first year, you had such a large increase because you had, it was something I think like sixty students. Who came and and and, you know, when we look at projections for the town. Um, Rutland is one of the places that we feel like you could have some growth. And so that's one factor, I guess I would say, the other factor is that whole assessment piece. In that, you know, we we would say to you, yeah, I mean, we're definitely gonna try to do level services. And like next year, I think our goal would be to offer more E and D. And so we're not putting positions into the the budget at all. And and to help with costs that way, where hopefully we're at a a better level to do that and offer some real relief to you. Um, but until something happens with the budget, you you know, in terms of the formula that the state is using. And I would agree, it's been, they've been talking about this by not doing a whole lot about it. Um, you know, I get concerned that it may take a year or two for them to even do it. The other factor that might be helpful is if we get out of held harmless and we start turning that around, which will be getting more chapter seventy eight. We'll hopefully have, um, even if the budget is increasing at that amount, the impact on the towns will hopefully be less. So the, but the factor, right, is if we, so if we look at four and a half to five and a half.
Right.
This year, it probably was closer to.
It was five point eight two, so a little under six, like you said.
We had some extra positions in it.
Yeah, I think we have two more years of maybe add.
You're gonna have a surcharge every year right now, because until the state gets you up into a higher level. Every time they look at Rutland, your assessments going up are one or two percent in terms of what what the state has you paying. That's the other big issue with the funding form.
Yeah, and that's gonna be both.
But if that's gonna, if that assessment stays the same, if it's it's going up one percent or two percent. And the school budget is in and around six percent, we're still, seven percent is probably a reasonable growth. And as far as the the population goes, the more kids that end up, I would expect, the more kids that end up going into the school. Means that there's more parents, there's more families in town, which means that there's more houses being built. Which means that the new growth is gonna be greater than what we have as a conservative new growth number right now.
Yeah, but we always have to remember that property tax is paid over maybe one student and that's basically it.
Well, and I understand that, but I'm just saying that if the, if the, um, if if the, the number of, the number of students goes up. There's a correlation between that and the number of houses that are being built, that goes to taxes.
But it's also, I mean, frankly, you also have an aging population right now. So as the people age out of the house, whatever, however happens, right? They might be, the the people who move in could be a family.
Right.
So we could be replacing somebody who's not paying for a a student in in the school versus somebody who is. So there's two avenues there that that have potential for high growth.
Yeah.
Um, and could make our total expenses higher and higher and higher as we go. And will frankly, not really change the property tax, I mean, some growth will, but really, that doesn't help our bottom line as much as it needs to. Compared to what we're paying.
I agree.
Which would be solved potentially by overrides, by the way.
By the way.
You increase the property tax rate.
You obviously wanna give more than me, right? Cuz I'm at the end of my cycle.
Yep, you're correct. Yeah, but you wanna foster those young minds and make sure that they are raised at the best possible they can be. Because you're a good person.
What goes into instructional support, I'm just trying to understand, it's stupid stuff that I just need to have.
Do you, you wanna ask them now?
Yeah, I'll ask them.
And again, they said, you know, if anyone has questions, maybe um we could forward them to Austin. If over the next couple of days, if you think of something, we could put together a a small, you know, list of other questions. We could have Austin send them as a group, so we're not bombarding. Um, and then, uh, you know, we could just do that once. So if people have follow-up questions over the next couple of days, um, maybe just ask, uh, uh, sorry, Austin, but maybe just ask Austin directly. Um, and he can put together a a little forum for us.
Hey, quick question, do you guys have a a fallback plan if two of the towns don't pass the budget?
Um, yeah, we we go into one twelfth, um, you know, we, it'd be probably just because of the the timing of the town meetings. Um, you know, I think we'd have to work with school committee and see what they think and and get their recommendations. Um, whether or not it means uh foregoing some of the um positions that we're hoping to get. Or um being charged to 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 look at revenue, we're we're nervous, like we'll be honest. Because I think part of the problem so long in the district was we weren't following good, sound financial principles. You know, Mi- uh, Michelle shared a little bit about the circuit breaker and how we're we're banking on funds that we don't even have coming in yet. And that's a very dangerous game and, you know, if you look at North Andover now, um, they ended up having two million dollars in unexpected special education costs. Um, and they're laying off, I think, thirty plus people. And so that's one of the reasons why we're trying to be conservative with circuit breaker and use actual revenues from the previous year to fund the budget. We're trying to be similarly cautious with E and D, right now, I think we're a little bit less than two percent. Um, and I think it was last year, we had shared, I think we had put in, it was like two and a half million in E and D over the the previous three years. But we were at a dangerous level where, you know, for us, one percent, like Michelle always says this, like, you know, she'll be like, I got an A. I'm at ninety nine percent or whatever it is for, you know, how 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 we developed. You know, when you look at how accurate the budget is, but you know, the truth is, a a percent for us is one point two five million dollars this year. You know, and so if we don't have something to help us in those situations, and that's why we're trying to be cautious with E and D. So for revenue sources, she's already tried to squeeze it kind of to the level she can, I think we're up eight fifty from last year. Um, and that's, and and so I don't know what we do, we we have to be prepared and we're looking at some of the plans and we're gonna have to be ready for that. Um, but I am, I am worried if it comes down uh down to people. Um, because I think it's gonna impact um the experience students have. Cuz we're, it doesn't, I know when we have such a big budget and we are, we're just monster, right? But when you really look at our appropriations and how much they're going up and what Michelle ba- bases it on. That's a, that's a pretty clean, tight budget, that doesn't have a lot of fat in it. And so my fear is, is that what we're gonna end up having to do is look at personnel.
Yeah, we're we're all in a difficult position, right?
My plan is to do whatever you want me to do to get your voters to vote, even for your override or whatever.
So we are, we have proposed a override at this court, or we're recommending an override. I was just correcting, that's right, Slack Court has has put in place an override uh to be uh brought to the town floor. Um, we will probably be doing some sort of town halls throughout the next, how long do we have, a couple of months? Um, we'll obviously invite you guys, I I think we would all love for at least somebody, whether it's you two or somebody else from the administration. Um, to be able to answer questions specifically, cuz of course, and I know you were there, is that two years ago now?
Um, so, so we'll obviously invite you, I will let you know as soon as we know what those dates will be um for any of those.
Cuz that'll be very helpful to have specific details and knowledgeable answers.
So, and um, the, we got asked last night if we would consider using more E E and D. Um, I don't know if it comes down to like it doesn't pass. The problem is if it doesn't pass by two towns, we have to use E and D prior to um, prior to six thirty. But you have to give the towns forty five days to vote, we got, remember, two years ago? I have not forgotten it, we had to get out of our budget by using E and D and we dipped our E and D way below. I had to, I basically used it.
Using this five is is what?
About a little less than two million, I think.
Yeah.
So I mean, i- in reality, even if you use that two million or more of that E and D. The overall impact on the towns is gonna be very minimal.
Yeah, and we, and then after that, I got nothing, like we got nothing next year, so, and I don't think that I can use it. So, uh, we really, like, uh, there's been, previous to to um Superintendent Riley joining. Joining this organization, there was eight years of the district didn't do anything. And you keep, you keep doing nothing.
I I warn against uh saying that after you use E and D, there's nothing. Because I think we've talked about it, and I know the other towns are talking about using all of their stabilization funds to fund this year. So if by saying you won't have any, a lot of these towns will not have anything after this year, so just just be careful, like.
They already said that to us last night, they use all their free cash, but they do have a stabilization fund.
But I think a lot of people are using them.
Yeah, we have, yeah, and I know, it's, 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 I don't think um people would, you know. Want the towns to do that, that's not in the financial best interest of anybody. Cuz then what happens if something, like to deplete every bit of savings that you have?
Yep.
I don't wanna have to come back to the towns to go.
Yeah.
And what's happening with your buildings? Our towns are not spending the money and we don't wanna see a desk fall through a floor. Because we haven't maintained it, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but we haven't maintained them, so it's kinda on both.
Yeah. We're totally on the same side, like, we don't, we don't want it to be the schools versus the towns or anything like that. We need to be in it.
We're try, I mean, I think, I think a lot of people have been trying to make a a shift in that narrative and it's definitely been in the past. I know I've been advocating for that for a while now and I yelled it Darren last week a little bit.
So I, like, I truly feel if the towns are using up their savings, then let us keep it so we can help you next year. So you're not in the same situ, you know, the same situation of having to ask for an override two years later. Like where there has to be, like, it's every, it's all, all of us together, you know? If, but if we all go all in and we're all being financially irresponsible, it's not gonna work in the long run.
I just wanna say too, we we very much appreciate the support from the towns and we have been very well supported. Um, people had patience with us when uh we didn't have the right to expect it in our first year. And then last year, I think we all got hit by um the hold harmless in chapter seventy and people stood by us and and let us do level services. And we know that wasn't easy and so I I do just wanna say, I think we, we definitely feel very well supported by the towns uh for the last two years. And and we do appreciate that and do understand that that came with uh some sacrifice, so thank you.
Anybody else?
Only thank you, appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
I'm not leaving without a cookie.
Austin, can you put that thing that you showed me up on the screen today, please?
And by the way, you have a great town manager sitting over there.
Oh, you say that, you know it's gonna go right to his head.
They're going for cookies, that's right.
So Sheri me?
She has some napkins over there.
Did you bring a paper? Start handing them out.
Oh, no, we're we're all signed.
Your sign?
Oh, you ain't seen the last of me yet.
They might not make it in my town, I don't know.
So.
She does it so quick, too.
This is a chat that Austin put together and this shows what. So everybody in the room understands where we're all, we agree with the schools, but this is what. When you guys do that, that's how disproportionate four point five at the schools is to us. Look at the nu- look at the way it rises.
Why are you looking at me like?
No, 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 just, you're just there. This is, you agree with me, I, well, you you, this is nothing to fight over, this is fact.
You're just talking about the difference between our revenue and our expenses over the next five years. You're just looking at how they're growing.
Scary.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, but Austin's already showed us that, right, with the.
Well, he showed us the numbers.
Well, we should, you should, we should have this burned in everybody's brain.
Right.
Because over the next few months, we we gotta prove this.
So your, your perspective, your picture, is bigger impact than the nine million dollar number and I agree with that. It just, this looks like crazy. But the question is, how do we deal with?
Expense to revenue budget is high, you you look at that right there, guys, it's scary.
Yeah, I mean, it's been scary, I don't think he's uh, I don't know about that.
Can't do it.
Run this by increasing the water costs.
No, no, no.
How much water do you really need, Tom?
Not much.
Just dehydrate.
That's right. So we got any
Well, if we're gonna talk about it, if, if we're gonna meet with the selectmen for five years,
paving all the lots and
We're gonna discuss that.
add about fifty cents to the
This, this override thing, whether we agree or disagree and
It keeps us stable from
Austin can get us with seven million dollars override, he can get us into thirty, thirty-one. But we're never gonna pass a seven million dollar override.
Well, it doesn't matter anymore, because it was already, it was already voted on to go for two point one this year, so I mean
No, 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 they can change it, number ain't that they want.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're definitely not going to with three people here, that's not even, they're not
No, 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 but I'm just saying, no matter what we do, we're not gonna pass a seven point one million dollar
Well, so, I, I, so, hold on, so I don't think we would pass a seven million dollar override that would take place starting, starting this year. But if we said that it was a seven million dollar override over five years, I think, or over four years, whenever the case, I think there'd be more of a likelihood of it happening, and it would
That's, that's why I wanna do this, this is Shrewsbury's that you sent me, override statement. And what they committed to the residents, if they approve, what was theirs, nine, or was it seven, nine? This is what I want us to come up with, because
We should really talked about last week, or you guys talked about last week, sorry.
You need to be able to justify how, what, what are we going to give to the residents? And what are we going to say we're not going to do, and we need to hold ourselves accountable to it.
Yeah.
So this, to me, you're not gonna sell an override at that kind of a number without some sort of promises.
A serious plan and a multi-year plan, and a lot of that has to come honestly from the school board, I mean, actually, the majority has to come from the school.
But don't you think we also have to justify why the last override didn't last, just state exactly what we, how it was spent?
Yes, I think we need to explain
We need to clarify the, the truth behind and, and get rid of the people's, um, misinformation, which is never gonna happen as we've seen over the last few years.
And, and to be fair, I think we need to be accountable and say there were mistakes made, the right numbers weren't used.
Well, there were, actually, there weren't really mistakes made. There was things that happened after the initial forecast was created, that changed in the next year.
It's a four percent increase for the schools.
So Austin, if you
That was, but it was, but the problem is, is you got wrong information from the people you were asking.
Well, not only that, but we went into Hold Harmless right after.
But regardless of that, the school's never been four and a half percent, ever, for us.
So, but if you go back to Austin, can you flip back to that?
Yeah, sorry.
Just for one second, you got, no matter, we can't cut ten million dollars out of this town.
Right.
So, so what's the option?
It has to be overrides, and that's the only
Well, e- either it's overrides or what we know as Rutland is gonna change.
Well, I, I think too, that the
You're not gonna save that much money.
The rate at which the school is increasing is not gonna continue at the rate it's spending.
That was, that's
Yes, it is, they told us it was.
Yes, it is.
No, I don't think it is.
If, if the state doesn't change the funding, it's gone.
No, 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 I, no, they, they were showing the six percent growth, and then they were showing seven percent of the allocation,
Yes, it's a six percent Yeah, we were still, yeah.
Which said that there's a, there's a growth, but it's not like ten percent like we had before, like what was shown.
Yeah, well, so, um, the, so, um, physically your twenty-four increase was nine point five five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the original number that we got a couple of months ago was like, I think it was, it was eight-ish. So that's why I went to ten, because ten did still bore off from the highest I've seen it since I've been
You, you should budget for worst case.
Yeah, but, but it, but often it could pounce, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it could pounce, correct.
So ten percent this year, and you're increasing it ten percent, all of that ten percent, and you're going up, so it's just, I think that
Which is where that line is coming from, frankly, that's, that's where that line's coming from.
That seven point, if, even if they do seven percent, we're out of luck.
Absolutely, yeah, there's definitely a problem, I don't think anyone's disputing that there's a problem.
At all.
But I do think that it's, it's overstated slightly in that, in that increase, and not by a lot, not by a lot.
But again, just, just being, just being
It's conservative, it's conservative, sorry, it's not overstating, it's conservative.
And to be fair, like, on, on Bay Path, it's probably maybe too low for the next few years. You know, maybe, maybe we put it to fifteen percent, I don't know, it depends on, you know, where they set their enrollment, you know, are we gonna keep sending more students there? You know, that's, that's the one that's been difficult to tell, I mean, I was not expecting the transportation assessment for Bay Path to be twenty thousand dollars higher than it has been for the past few years.
Plus, we had thirty, thirty-three more students this year.
So they gotta put another bus on or something.
Yeah.
Well, they're using less of their transportation stabilization fund to offset assessments. But, so, I mean, that, the, the updated model, which I don't think it shows it on here, um, you know, and, uh, you know, the seven million, for example, would get you to FY thirty-one, and your deficit in FY thirty-one with these conservative assumptions.
Yeah.
Your deficit would only be three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in FY thirty-one.
So the
So, so, I appreciate all this discussion, but it's getting late. Just wanna know when we're gonna get the cut budget. Do we know?
I thought it was gonna be discussed on Monday.
It's on Monday.
It's on the agenda, I believe, for Monday.
Okay. So we go another week.
So, but that's, I mean, really, that's what we're not gonna be able to do. We have to, the town, and just when I say we, I'm not talking about me or this group, but the town has two options. Take the numbers that they have and cut it down, take the services out, that identify what that, that reduced budget would be, or pass the override and fund the, and, and fund the services.
Well, correct.
But, and that's, that's the option.
There's another option.
Which is?
We take all the stabilization money, we do all that, now, I know it's a bad idea.
Right.
But, that's my money, that's the taxpayers' money.
Right.
So, we're gonna give them an override, and we're still gonna, i- it's poor financial, there isn't a person in this room thinks it's a good idea, but do you think it's a good idea to give a two point one million dollar override and have a million dollars worth of money there?
Well, so, I mean, it depends upon how you wanna look at it.
Well, what
From, from my perspective, I would rather have the reserve for the future and ask for
Yeah, but what's the, what, what is the future? I don't know the future.
So, so the future is two point one million dollars more, a- and the alternative is two point one million dollars less in services.
Well, but you already paid a, you already paid a million dollars that we wanna take. So, so, what, I understand that it's bad financial practice to pay one debt with, but what are you gonna?
We, uh, we
What are we saving it for?
Uh, the deteriorating infrastructure of this town?
We've already said buildings are
Buildings are falling.
Yeah, but so you, yeah, but buildings are falling down, you're not gonna, you're not gonna do anything with it.
Well, so, you, you're, the alternative is to be able to say that buildings are falling, I need, I go to the town, say we just did it, an override, I need some more money to make sure that the, the library doesn't fall down, or the town hall doesn't fall down. You think that's gonna pass?
Can we turn up the heat next time we have a meeting in this room, I'm flipping freezing.
I mean, it's the same thing, I, I just think that if we go out with a transparent request to say
Don't worry, we don't need it into our free cash, we need
You either want services and this, we can pay, if you don't wanna pay, then you don't get these services, are you done?
So you're, so you would say that we get two point one million dollar override, and we're gonna use stabilization fund for fixing town buildings?
As needed.
As required.
Yeah, that's what it's there for.
It's, you, if you use that, that's, it gives a false sense that that's going to be there in the future, and it's not.
It's also, it helps us for one year, and then next year, like, that, that ten million dollars or whatever, the seven million dollars that we're gonna face in five years,
then we're
If we use stabilization funds, we're still gonna have that seven million dollars in five years, but now we have zero dollars in the bank.
I think you better be prepared to sell to the people of the town, that you're gonna take two point one million dollars over here, but I also have a million dollars sitting over here in my disan, and I'm not gonna use it.
But doesn't that require two-thirds vote, too?
It does.
Yeah.
How long did it take us to get that money?
A lot of years.
Yeah.
A lot of
And we're looking short to spend it and
And if something bad happens, it's gonna be gone in an instant.
Yeah.
That's what it's there for.
I'm just, I'm just saying people know that it's there, right?
And they should know, cause they, that should, that should give them a, a, a little bit of comfort that we have money in case an emergency happens. And, and that is proper financial planning and what everyone should do, I get that everyone can't do that, I understand that, but that's, that's how you should be budgeting your personal finances, and that's how we as a town should be advocating for.
In our budget roundtables or whatever you guys wanna call them over here, the, the Budget Sundays or Budget Saturdays, you better bring it up.
People are gonna ask that question, if you're gonna They should ask that question, Darren, you're absolutely right, and we should have an answer for it.
To spend it all.
The answer, I think the answer is either
Well, and it hurts our, it hurts our ability to get bonds, ratings and borrowing and
Right, that, that oil, filter, commercial, ground, whatever.
God only knows, we're gonna need all that.
Pay me now, pay me later.
Well, we, we will be borrowing next year for the fire truck, we haven't borrowed it yet, but, yeah.
How much do we have to borrow for that?
Uh, one point eight.
Yeah, I mean, the problem with using, uh, we always talk about this, we've talked about this for years now, and, and the problem is using one-time financial, one-time funds is never a solution for an operating deficit. It'll simply create a bigger problem in the future that you don't have that money to use anymore.
Would it be possible to ask our legislators to take some of that, write a special legislation that we can free up some of that Roland Heights money and use that to offset these budget woes?
But it's still one-time funds.
Well, but it's just sitting there, we can't do anything with it, we haven't done ch- with, with it.
Well, yeah, but that's not gonna help now, is it? I mean, we couldn't get that done this year.
But I think what Darren's trying to say, maybe not use stabilization, but if we were to use our free cash funds, not a good idea, but that would give us one year to be able to get out there and educate, and let the people know that we need a much larger override to go forward. That right now, we're gonna do two point one this year, and then something else next year.
Right.
And then something out, you know, depending upon what we do next year. So I think what Darren's trying to say is, not the stabilization, but the, if we use the free cash, we would be buying more time to be able to do a bigger one-time override and train everybody. And I mean, starting July first, we start having stuff to let them know what's going.
Can we, can we take, can we go for some sort of legislative action to take that money from Roland Heights, it's how many million dollars of debt?
Faster they work.
It's, I think it has about one point three right now, um, in the balance.
And it's in an interest.
So, it is, it's doing, it's helping us out a lot, um, on free investment income, but, uh, so that is, um, sale of real estate proceeds, which is, uh, general law, um, so we'd have to, it would have to definitely be special legislation to exempt us. Um, for the use of the funds.
Well, it won't get done this year.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, I, so we have to
Do you have to pay for the fire truck?
Probably, cause it could be used with that. But that, I mean
We gotta use that money for, it's just sitting there.
It could pay for the, it could pay for a, a majority of the borrowing for the fire truck.
All right, so that's what I'm saying, we gotta
Or, or the parking lots.
Your concern is that it shows the money is there and people are gonna
But hypothetically, if we were paving
Well, we, we have reasons why we can't, because we literally can't
They don't park in the McDonald's, I don't know why I'm gonna pay money to repave them.
They see the money.
No, I, I get his point.
We need to explain it.
Yeah, I get it. But I, it goes back to the one, using one-time funds to offset an operating deficit is never, ever the answer.
Well, you gotta come up with a different plan this year, cause you're not getting two point one unless you s- really start selling. And then even if you really start selling, the sentiment around town, if you listen to people that I listen to, I'd be like, are you kidding me? So, where, again, and then, that's not, that's, we're just going like this.
And then next year, totally buying one year, that's the big thing.
We're going like this, we're, we're saying two point one, but then, next year it's two point one, or seven, or whatever.
Really, it's gonna be five the following year, cause we
So
Hearing the same thing you are, Darren, and, and the one person who put it on there, put it on me, said, okay, we can fix it with an override, we can fix it with an override, we can fix it with an override, it's a broken record.
Yeah, well, it is, that's, uh
Well, that's our only revenue source.
Yeah, it's all, it's the only thing we can do, though.
I mean, when you, when you look at the line items
Well, this is the way that people in town are feeling.
But when you look at the line items on the budget, if things are going up, even if they're going up five percent, we can only get to, you're already in the hole for two and a half percent.
Right.
Yes. And if people can understand that and educate them, yes.
Well, I'd also like to know
But we're going into four weeks, by the time we do this, it's four weeks. Because, uh, so you guys are gonna start discussing it on Monday. And then, you know, before you know it, we're at the beginning of April.
We can start talking about this, though.
But you gotta have data to sell this, and the data is, if we don't do this, this is what you're gonna lose.
Well, I mean, that can be put together.
Listen, I don't care if I won a million dollars, I wouldn't, uh, vote for an override right now, because I don't know what I'm gonna lose. And I'm sorry, I am in full agreement that we have to go out and we have to put out the thing that said, listen, we screwed up with our propos-, with, with the forecast, and here's why it was wrong.
Right.
And here's where it got spent, and yes, this wasn't all necessarily in the budget for the override, and we have to be transparent.
Right.
I don't, I don't, I agree with what you just said, but we didn't screw up, conditions changed.
The forecast made assumptions that were not accurate, wrong information was given to the person who did the forecast. Because it was, wrong information was given at that time.
Well, screwed up sounds worse than the assumptions that we had.
The assumptions were screwed up.
But it doesn't matter, um
What, I don't want this screwed
But we need to take it on our shoulders that this was incorrect, it was whatever. We have to honestly say, hey, whoops, and here's why.
And this, and this is why it didn't last.
Let's be honest, though, that doesn't even matter, because even if we had done a bigger override then, or, or whatever, we'd still be in the same exact scenario we are right now. The, the number we need going forward would be slightly less, we'd have a slightly lower deficit each year, but that wouldn't change the fact that we still have a deficit.
No, but, but we need to explain it to people, so they understand.
Yeah, absolutely, we need to explain the events of how things have happened, but we also need to explain that
I mean, we need, we need to explain, and we have to
we are in a constant deficit
Yep.
forever.
But we need to say, cause we stood up, and said this would last two to three years. So we need to say, this is where the mistakes were.
Yeah, and, so
And put it down on paper.
Right, so that people can, uh, can understand.
We said two to three years, and, and it did last just about two years, so I, I wanna be careful. I think somebody said, uh, three to five, which was a, uh, which is a tough, uh, yeah, overreach, but it was supposed to be three, and it lasted roughly two. So, but either way, it doesn't change the fact that the, that we're in a structural deficit year after year after year.
We used six hundred eighty thousand dollars of cash.
So we're gonna sit down, we're gonna sit down, the s- the selectmen, some of the selectmen will be there, the school committee, the school people are gonna be there, we're gonna be there, and we're gonna sit there, and we're gonna tell the people, they're gonna be sitting over there, Harry is, we're gonna say, well, we think we should give them two point one million dollars this year, we're gonna need your two point one million dollar override this year to get us through till next year. But, and while their jaws are still open, we're gonna say, we're gonna come and get you for five or seven next year.
Which, which is gonna be, again, it's overtime, though, so it's like two million a year, basically.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Well, again, it's, I, I'm not saying that that's like, that's much better, but, yeah.
Or, get rid of services. And we've already, and we've already heard from people saying, you can't touch the top four. Police, fire, DPW, and emergency services.
So, so just to be clear, if you did get rid of everything but those, which I don't know what that number is, but let's just say you got rid of everything but those top four,
But you're still getting everything.
You're still being a structural deficit in two years. So that doesn't even, like, and, and now we have zero services in town other than police, fire, whatever the top four, I don't
So, so here's the problem, whether you wanna take it as seven, or two every year, or two over the next five years, people are gonna like, oh, oh my god.
Of course they are.
Of course, I, I mean, sure they would, but they need to hear what they have, it's, see, that's the whole point. This is their decision, they get to say, I want those services, I want that money back.
All right, so they say no, let's, let's, let's be we- let's be worst-case scenario.
Right.
They say no this year.
Right.
We go to them next year, they say no again.
Right.
But right about next year, we're gonna
It's four million.
Yeah, four million, we're gonna take the rest of the fire department that we just hit.
Right.
We're gonna hit them again, the next year, what are we gonna do then, we're, and, and by twenty thirty, we're not gonna have a police or fire department.
Correct.
Your roads aren't getting plowed.
Yeah.
But that's on, that's on
Well, we'll have a town clerk, cause we have to have one of those.
To Pete's point, though, that means that the, the population has made a decision, that's what they want, but you're also gonna get people that are moving the hell out.
But guys, all I can say is, we need that cut budget, we need that cut budget, because we have to start selling it now.
And who's gonna sit there and sell it? Us?
Listen, I don't think it's a sale, it's a statement.
Yeah, it's a statement.
You, you spend this money, you cut these services, and then you send, you give it to the, the town people
And how are you gonna answer that to someone who cannot And how are you gonna answer that to someone who cannot afford the house that they have now?
That the answer to them is go and vote against it. Vote against it at town meeting, vote against it at the at the polls, go ahead and do that.
Well, Austin Austin had a a pretty good idea too la- and it uh doesn't help the people who are on the line of struggling, but creating a sort of stabilization fund for people who need assistance. Um so, you know, you put into place, if somebody makes under X, they have to prove it and then they get help on their property tax.
But that just brings the rest of us pretty much.
I I know, I I I get it.
Right, right.
But it it helps the people that need help and it's.
And and Darren, there's some people out there that can afford a much larger amount. I'm not saying that people are all, but and they're not paying them their fair share.
They can, but how they gonna do it?
I don't know, I don't know.
What are you gonna be careful saying they're not paying their fair share?
Well, they're not paying they're not paying what they can afford.
But they're being they're paying what is dictated by town.
Their fair share, right, absolutely correct.
And which is why I I think that there needs, there are, well, I I don't, I I'm advocating that there needs to be a change in the real estate tax, uh property tax here.
Right.
And if we can do that while helping the people who can't afford it, I'm in favor of that partly and and I don't wanna, I trust me, we're all talking about this, but we're also all paying the X raise in taxes. I don't wanna pay anymore, of course, I don't wanna pay anymore, but I'm willing to, because I want those services in town and I want, frankly, I I have two young kids, I want my kids to grow up in a good educational system. So I'm all for for that and I'm for to to Pete's point, paying more than my fair share, I again, I don't wanna pay it, probably can't afford it. But I still would be willing to pay more and I'd have to cut something else out of my budget to make it work.
Yeah.
But I'd be happy to to offset somebody else's property tax to some degree, but if everyone in town who can do that, like I'm saying, I I would. Then hopefully, we can make it happen and make it work for everyone and that's that's the hope, is we can make it work for everyone, but.
And you better hope that some of the elder statesmen in our town don't remember why two and a half was put in, because they're gonna tell you about it around the town meeting floor.
That's their right.
Yeah, but it two and a half was put in because of things just like what are happening today.
Yeah, I agree.
Are we are we meeting next Thursday?
It was enacted in nineteen eighty and it hasn't been touched since, it's not.
Um, I think we need to get a cut budget before we move.
Well, that's gonna happen on Monday, they said, so.
No, they're they're going to discuss it on Monday.
Oh, I know, but should we should meet Thursday?
I hope we have, I hope we come to something.
Well, we'll fall, we'll fall up, I'll fall up.
How are you doing so far there, Tootsie?
Yeah, cuz I gotta talk to three guys.
The cut budget, have you gotten more direction?
We're in a week's time.
Yeah, we're gonna have to meet soon.
There's there's a couple of things on the table already.
You can always cancel it if you cancel it.
Um, I think this is the fourth merger of the time, right, so that's what I'll be giving them to discuss one day.
I paid taxes on my house before two and a half and I paid taxes on my house after two and a half, okay? What do I feel about two and a half? I felt when it passed and became law, I thought, oh, this is really gonna be God's send. So far, God send everything and never mind the rest of it.
You didn't have two and a half, you'd be paying twenty percent.
Yeah, you know, you will you will get increases of four percent, five percent along the way and.
Yeah, and that's in.
So two and a half and that that was only out here, you look at the towns in closer to Boston and that sort of thing, and they were going bananas.
And everybody's wanting more services, everybody wants more services. The question is, are they willing to pay for it? And I, you know, typically, as the as we were just discussing, nobody wants to pay more taxes, no one.
So what mandates the cut budget if the fire department cuts X? And we go before the people, before the town meeting, do they have to cut X? Or is that just, well, it's not gonna, I'm I don't wanna use the fire department, but what makes the departments in town honor what they say now? Because in years past, we've said, oh, we'll never be able to do it. You've been there and you've been there, and then all of a sudden, we find a way to do it. So is is that that what we're doing?
Well, okay, that's not being transparent.
Well, but it is.
If that's what we do.
It's happened before.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm saying that if that's what happens again, then we shouldn't be around, we shouldn't be around.
I'm I'm sorry, I don't understand what you just said.
But isn't that up to the select board to say? No, you can't spend that, it's not in your budget.
Yep.
Well, in years past.
Well, that's what you're saying, overdone.
Karen, do you have an example of what they said they were gonna do and then all of a sudden they had found money?
Money came in, money came, don't have enough money?
Um, yes, we we didn't have money for certain things and then we found other ways, creative ways, oh, well, we had a little bit more over here, so that came in over here and
Right. Right.
Instead, you know, it was, okay, well, you know, we had a little bit more new growth, so we're just gonna put it over here.
We can talk about that. That's specifics, that really, yeah.
Or we overpadded it over here, so we're gonna move it over here, we did a lot of interdepartmental transfers over the years.
You need you gotta have specifics, like that guy.
But to be fair, and I get that there is probably times where that was misused and and but sometimes money is saved in XYZ and there or there is a priority that changes throughout the year and is required to move the budget, I mean, that 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 can happen and does happen. I get that you're saying that there's examples where it was misused and and overdone, like.
But you have to be transparent with the people.
Right.
You can't make those changes and say, oh, well, here's the cuts, and then all of a sudden, you're reinstating some cuts and not others.
I get, yeah.
That's where the problem comes in, because now you're not, you now you're not putting it in the hands of the voters, because the voters voted one way.
That's right.
And then found other ways to do it and there's nothing worse than when that happened.
I would like to have a meeting next Thursday, probably.
It's fine.
And then uh I'll I think we're good unless somebody has something to say, motion to adjourn.
Second.
A discussion, 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 all those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
opposed?
Are you in tomorrow?
All second, all four in turn, nine forty.
Give them to Deep Diver.